All right, good evening. This is the May 19th, 2021 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we move to the pledge, I do have a statement I want to read, which is getting closer to being maybe not having to read much longer. The City of Cottage Grove continues to follow the state's direction on COVID-19 protocols. And as many of you know, the governor has lifted the mask mandate. Council members, staff members, and guests continue to follow social distancing guidelines. We have set up to offer seating with access to a video and audio feed just outside the council chambers, and the city continues to provide remote options for individuals who wish to participate in council meetings virtually. Please visit the city's website at cottagegrovemn.gov, hover over the dropdown menu, then click on Public Meetings. You'll find instructions for additional viewing and participation for tonight's meeting. So that's the statement. The next on our agenda then is the pledge, so if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. We'll do this two ways. One is just in case there's somebody online that wants to speak, I do see there might be three people out there. If you do want to speak and you are online, want to speak during open forum, please either raise your hand or give us some type of an indication, and our city clerk will alert me to who's, who wants to speak. But we did have three people sign up on our signup sheet out here, and I'll just start going down the list, and if I read your name, if you would just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you get up to three minutes. The first one is Sarah Wertz, I believe it's Wertz, 8642 Gross Point Avenue South.
Hi, yes, my name is Sarah Wertz. I'm at 8642 Gross Point Avenue South here in Cottage Grove, and thanks for allowing me to come and speak. So there, I'm speaking about Mississippi Dunes and the potential housing development there. So there are some very knowledgeable people here tonight that want to speak, that are better equipped to speak to the ecological importance of this property and how a large housing development will impact it, as well as the very real ways that funding can come together to help purchase and preserve the land for the city. I wanted to share how important the Mississippi Dunes property is to me and my family, how we envision our family and the community being able to enjoy this space, as well as my thoughts on housing there. My husband and I bought our first home here in Cottage Grove 13 years ago, and we're raising our three children there, here. We've had family in the area my whole life, so it's home for us. We love to explore outdoors and enjoy exploring parks and nature areas around the metro. My eight-year-old son has been to Crosby Farm Park and many other areas along the river with school, so he's building his own connection to the Mississippi River. Our family has visited the headwaters, we also fish and have canoed the areas around Gray Cloud. Having a place nearly in our backyard to really explore and, you know, further our love for the river would be incredible. It would definitely be a reason for us to stay in Cottage Grove, which is the city with the most river shoreline of any city along the entire length of the Mississippi River. Having a large public park or nature area adjacent to the river would be a huge draw for many people, both within our community and outside of it. The city has stated that having public access to the river is a priority. This is a great place to have that. I know the proposed plans have a launch included, but those plans don't include enough acreage for a park that will have the amenities and preservation that the community desires. Fishing piers and trails and picnic shelters won't matter if there isn't enough land preserve to protect the river and the fish, and the native plants and animals and insects that live there. We have many amazing parks in our community that I can go to for a walk or to, for my kids to ride bikes or play on a traditional playground structure. Let's make this place something special, a destination park. The recreational and educational opportunities are practically endless for people of all ages. There's so much potential here for our community. I have heard that the county has potential plans for a park on Gray Cloud Island. From my understanding, this is not even on their five-year plan, and I believe that if the county were to someday develop a park space on the island, that it could provide different amenities than a city park could on the Mississippi Dunes property. While I understand the desire for housing on this beautiful property, it saddens me. I occasionally hike at Gray Cloud Dunes SNA, and while I was there a few weeks ago, I looked across the prairie from the dunes and imagined how it would look with a large development within sight. Over 100 homes plus townhomes plus apartments or condos? We can put that development anywhere in Cottage Grove. If there is any kind of housing development that would best suit this property, it would be a small environment, a small grouping of homes that are designed with the environment in mind. I imagine a few homes at the end of a long road that are clustered together with lots of acreage around them. These could be true luxury homes that would appeal to people who desire privacy and love nature. Having a large nature preserve or park adjoining their property would be a big draw and raise their house values.
Sarah, we're over the three minutes, but did you want to kind of wrap up?
Yeah, I just had one more.
Thank you.
One more thing here, thanks. So as the city council, you have the privilege and the power to do what is best for our community and to do great things for Cottage Grove. Please reconsider the Mississippi Dunes project as it is today. Once an area is developed, there is no going back, so please do everything you can to preserve this hidden gem in our community and make it a great place for all of us and generations to come to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the list out there was Colleen O'Connor.
Good evening, Mayor Bailey and councilmembers. I'm Colleen O'Connor-Toblerman with Friends of the Mississippi River, and I really appreciate your time this evening. Friends of the Mississippi River sent you a longer letter regarding Mississippi Dunes yesterday. My colleague Lisa Mueller has printed copies, if anyone would like to see them, but I'm going to give very brief remarks. Last week's Park Recreation and Natural Resources Commission meeting, several residents attended or spoke or submitted written comments regarding Mississippi Dunes and the potential for a city park there. The overwhelming sentiment from both residents and the commissioners was that the proposed 15 to 20-acre park that you'll be considering tonight is too small. It won't include enough space or amenities to serve the entire city. We agree with the park commissioners on that. I know that at this moment, the property owner is most interested in developing housing on the land, but I urge you to use your power and responsibility as city leaders to guide that planning process to ensure that there's also a much larger park included at the site. As you know, several funding sources, including the DNR, Washington County, Friends of the Mississippi, and other private sources, have all expressed serious interest in purchasing much of the land for use as a park or open space, and then the land could be given to the city. A few communities get that kind of opportunity, and we urge you to do everything in the city's power to pursue it. It's very rare. As the next step, we'd like to see the city conduct a broader community engagement process this summer that would get more community input from residents about what they'd like to see in a park at Mississippi Dunes. That would give you as leaders valuable feedback about community priorities and make it easier to determine how part, how big that park should be and what kind of trade-offs are going to be made during the planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the next one that was on our list out there is Eric Wandersack? Is it Wandersack? I'm sorry.
Wandersey.
Wandersey?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, city council members and mayor. My name's Eric Wandersey. I'm a local builder and real estate professional. I was introduced to Mr. Bisco through my grandfather-in-law, Joe Rumka. I've been working with Mike Marosa, Emily Ben, Joe and Amanda, and a lot of other cities' workers. I'm grateful for all the work and attention that the city workers have put into this project. The development would be roughly 39 lots, about 1.5 acres each. There will be small outbuildings allowed on each lot that community members would love to have. We would allow smaller, local builders to build homes for the community. As of now, if someone wants to build a home in Cottage Grove or the surrounding cities, they would have to build with a national builder. The community doesn't have the option to build a home that they really want or to use local builders that they want. This would give the people of Cottage Grove the ability to upgrade their home and stay in Cottage Grove and not move to a city like Woodbury or surrounding. We want to use all local excavation, sewer, road, and tradesmen on this project. Our goal is to build Cottage Grove both economically and create $250,000 to $300,000 in tax revenue annually for the city. Unfortunately, we have come to a roadblock. The city would like me to do and pay for the following. Pave 100 and Lehigh, which is over 200 mi, or which is over two miles of city roads that I will be responsible to pay for and manage. $135,000 park dedication fee, $180,000 in inspection fees, $25,000 in permit fees, and $600,000 for a storm water runoff fee. The last fee is what I would like to ask the city council members to reconsider. The city would like 600K for storm water runoff fee. The city would like to collect this fee to build future storm basins for water that leaves my property and goes downstream. I'm working with expert water solutions team. The same engineer that designed the training center in Cottage Grove, like the training center, there's modern engineering that can make it so no water ever leaves the site. The HOA would be responsible to maintain the sewer and stormwater ponds. Therefore, this fee would not be needed, and we can move forward with the project for the community. The city has fees structured for over 80, for over $38,000 per lot in city fees. A normal rural development would be around $10,000 per lot. I kindly and respectfully ask the city council to reconsider this fee. I'm open and willing to work with the city. I would like to ask the city council if they need anything else from me and what the next steps would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, can I get you real quick though to state your address for the record? I forgot to mention that for you over there.
My address is 14136 Packard Street, Northeast, Ham Lake.
All right, fantastic, thank you, and thanks for sharing the info with us.
Thank you so much.
All right, sounds good. And I'll just mention if Colleen is okay, her address is 101 East Fifth Avenue in St. Paul? Okay, so that's for the record. Did we have anybody online that wants to speak? I didn't see anybody raise their hand.
There is one lady out in the hallway. Ask me.
Would you like to speak? If one of you out in the hall there wanted to speak, you can come on in. And again, if you'd just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Sure. I'm Eleanor Clancy, and I've lived here about 40 years, so I'm very fond of Cottage Grove and feel very strongly about the Friends of the Mississippi River and the Mississippi Dunes to get it to be a recreational park for everyone. This is just a brief summary from my letter that I sent to Colleen and Zach from May 3rd meeting. The ideas for a recreational facility are endless for the Mississippi Dunes. The obvious, of course, is picnic tables, grills, and rain shelters. Many towns have community centers, whereas Cottage Grove does not. The clubhouse could be used for a community center. There already is a kitchen, parking lot, and driveway. It would save thousands of dollars not having to build a center somewhere else for us. The upstairs could be used for, into, made into rooms to be rented for small private parties. The clubhouse could be used for a community center. There is also a kitchen, parking lot, and driveway. It would save, oh, I'm sorry, am I reading this over again? The upstairs could be used, could be made into rooms to be rented for small private parties. Since Cottage Grove keeps building villas, apartments, and townhomes, there is a need for party rooms for family get-togethers. Many other towns do have that. A rental fee and damaged, oh, a rental, uh, let's see here. A rental fee and damage deposit could be figured out for the cost for these party rooms to be rented out to them. The downstairs could be used for, as a rental office for items such as inner tubes, skates, and ski rentals for, in the winter, for tubing, sliding, skating, and cross-country skiing. In the summer, a couple of fishing piers could be built in the backwaters. That maybe would get more of the people off the side roads there as we drive through. Maybe canoe and paddle boats could be, could extend the kayak rentals. Maybe a shoreline could be created for a small beach. I'm not sure if that's possible or not. An archery range could be made for the driving into, you know, from the driving range that there is, there now. Activities for families to bring their children to, such as a petting zoo, Easter egg hunt, strawberry ice cream social, which we, you know, have, has stopped a long time ago. In the spring and summer, reindeer, snowman contest, or other related crisp winter items could be enjoyed. Maybe it would be, make it into a place to bring children, parents, and even grandparents to enjoy. That's my thoughts about it. I just thought I'd share that.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, was there anybody else that wants to speak on open forum? And I'm assuming you heard me out there, but just name and address for the record.
My name is Adam Grams. I live at 10655 Gray Cloud Trail South. Councilmembers and mayor, just wanted to, you know, give a couple angles. I just recently moved to town. I moved out there right next to Mississippi Dunes. I love it out there. It's this little, it's quiet, it's away from everything. I love, one of the things that attracted me to the area, of all the areas I could have lived in around the cities here, it was the historical aspect of that whole area, the natural, the natural area. Those sand dunes are just, they're just gorgeous, and with the different types of plants, then the endangered species there. And I just really think that, I mean, if you start thinking about the future, what's, what's the world going to look like in 100 years? What's Cottage Grove going to look like in 100 years? You know, we have a lot of great parks right now. These are, they're parks for kids, you know, outside of Ravine Park, a lot of them are for kids, and I think Cottage Grove needs like an adult park, kind of like Afton, any of these Three River, Three River Park Districts parks that we have, something that is a real destination place for Cottage Grove. And, you know, I started thinking about my kid, my kid, and just the future of this area, and I really think putting a large development there is the wrong way to go. I really think just preserving as much parkland as you can, especially right there on the river in this back channel, you know, not to even mention the upkeep that may have to go into dredging that for boats, you know, I, ideally, you know, what I'd like to see is just a canoeing back area park, but I really think, you know, just even living back there, disrupting the, you know, the quietness, the, one of the reasons I came back there, and just the seclusion of that area, you know, I think this is going to be a pretty big disruption to that, especially where the proposed roads are going to be right now. And so that, I would just consider, ask you to consider where these roads would be for current residents, current neighborhoods, you know, if you got to put a road in somewhere, let's put it in the, in the middle or not right next to where people are living, because a lot of the reasons people moved there was because of those, because of the woods and whatnot. But yeah, that's all I have to say, so thanks.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I go now?
Absolutely, just name and address for the record is all.
My name is Carla Endreen, and I reside at 10659 Gray Cloud Trail South Cottage Grove. All of you have heard from me several times now in recent days. I am a fairly new resident to the area. I moved in last June, so I'm coming up on one year. And for those of you who haven't seen my several letters, I'm very passionate about this issue, as these guys all well know, and there's a lot of reasons for that. I'm an environmental scientist by trade. I work in sustainability for the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and I know soils, I know ecosystems, and I know how rare this opportunity is and how we will likely not see anything like this ever again, particularly along this part of the Mississippi, but probably almost anywhere along the entire Mississippi River from Iguana to the Gulf of Mexico. I'm not kidding. This is an incredibly rare opportunity, and it would be a true atrocity to see this land go anywhere but into park. And I mean that in the most sincere way, because if you do not know the ecology of this area, you are doing a horrible thing by putting any housing here. There are a ton of reasons, which I outlined in a lot of my, my arguments to you guys, but I will give a brief summary to everyone else who hasn't seen those, and I do have my phone with my 10 pages of, of argument, so I may look at that from time to time. But ultimately, what I want to convey is that there are major economic reasons as well as ecological reasons, which is of course the primary reason I have this passion, but also, as my neighbor over there, Adam, said, there are huge cultural and historical aspects to this property as well, and I believe the person before we mentioned that cultural aspect as well, that we do not have in this community and we will not have in this community if we do not do something with this property. And I'm well aware that there's a potential park planned for Gray Cloud Island, and I would love to see that happen, but that is not what I'm asking for with this property. That park, if it happens, which is an if, it is not a guarantee, if that happens, that is not going to be the same kind of park. That is going to be a very developed park, as I've seen in the discussions that I've seen, is not, if you think that's correct. Please, anything?
Go ahead.
Nothing, okay. So the reason I say that, it's imperative that that point is made, because this is a very different thing. This is a nature-based park that butts up directly against a scientific and natural area that's been managed since the 80s by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. This golf course has been defunct for three years, and if any of you have seen the property in that time, it has completely been reclaimed by that native environment, and it is slowly going back to the way that it should be. And it is really in the most perfect condition to be transitioned into a park, because it has all of the trails already there with the cart paths. It has the clubhouse, which could easily be a community center, or, as I've argued in my economic points, there are several other uses for that building that would bring in revenue to the city. And it's all parking lot, boat access, there is a beach there for the person who asked about that. It's small, but it's absolutely perfect. It's the best spot on the entire section, including all of our home properties, it actually has a beach. So it's actually perfect for that. So I want to talk really briefly, and I see you're nodding my.
Yeah, we're already over the three-minute mark.
Oh, I didn't know I had a time limit. Well, can I have one more minute?
One more minute.
Thank you. So the economic argument is there are plenty of opportunities to make money on this. We know we have the finances to purchase the property at fair market value plus income for the property owner, and we could use that to get income from leasing out the school building to the CSU Environmental School, who has good amount of money set aside to do that. We have interest from rehabilitation organizations for ecosystem rehab that want to lease out the maintenance buildings and the greenhouse buildings. This property ecologically is awful for housing because of the landscape itself, the soils are sandy soils, no fertilizer can be used, you cannot have lawn on that site, it will drain directly into the water, and that groundwater is what we drink. No, no, there are so many more imperative points, and I want you to understand that this is not for housing. This property shall not be housing, because it is awful for it in a million different ways, historically, culturally, ecologically, and for everyone who actually wants to enjoy this community.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody else that wants to speak on open forum? And I didn't see any online either, so I'll go ahead and close open forum.
Sorry, wait, one second.
Yeah, if you want it, it's got to be real quick though.
Really fast, really fast. I just wanted to.
My name is Michael Weakman. I'm at 10659 Gray Cloud Trail South. I just wanted to jump in and echo some of Ms. Endreen's points and also Adam Graham's points as well, and formally pose the questions of, do we have a solid understanding of what is going to happen, or what is the impact of the, the local residents that already reside at this location? I was looking at the proposed plans that were laid out at the Parks Rec and, the Parks and Rec Board meeting. There were three proposals offered, and it was hard to tell just how far west a lot of these proposed plans stretch. So what I wanted to do today is just formally ask for additional information, if we can get it, on how far we think it's going to stretch into the existing neighborhoods there. What is the, the feel for the impact around that neighborhood? I mean, are we talking clear-cutting all the trees in that neighborhood just to create a new housing development, or really what is the planned effect? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I believe we can actually get all that information for the, for them. Okay. I didn't see anybody else at this point, so I will officially then close the open forum, and we'll move to number five on our agenda, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion by councilmember Dennis, second by councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is presentations. We do have one this evening. The first, our only presentation, I should say, is the Hero Center Annual Report, and Dan Anselman will be taking us. Welcome, Dan. It's been a while.
Thank you.
And your face, we can see.
Appreciate it, yeah. It's nice to see everybody's faces, so. Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, appreciate it for the time today. I will, I will be brief in this. I know you have a long agenda to go. So I'm going to present to you the 2020 Annual Report for the Hero Center. The Hero Center has the Facility Operations Committee Board, also known as the FOC, which was established in 2018 through the Joint Powers Agreement, consists of six members who coordinate and work directly and oversee the operations of the Hero Center, and then the Hero Center manager reports directly to the FOC committee. The FOC chair for 2020 was Angela Goral from Woodbury Assistant City Administrator. The Hero Center is staffed by two full-time employees and 12 part-time employees. The part-time employees are range safety officers as well as firearm safety instructors. There's myself and Brianna Zierlou, who is administrative training coordinator. Hero mission statement is to prepare first responders to serve their communities safely and effectively. We had several memberships and contracts for 2020. We have multiple levels. We have a Tier One membership. The Tier One membership currently is held by Washington County Sheriff's Office, and they contribute $150,000 annually for that with a 3% annual escalator. We have a Tier Two membership, which was Oakdale Police Department. They have $20,960 annually, and that'll be changed in here in 2021 with additional hours to the facility. And then we also obtained some federal solicitation awards for up to $95,900 annually between two U.S. Immigrations and Customs Enforcement groups, Homeland Security and Enforcement and Removal. Then we also have our 2020 non-member users. Now, 2020 was definitely an interesting year, and I don't have to tell everybody that, but certainly was, was interesting. So, but we did still see quite a few individuals come into the facility before we had to close down due to a number of different things with COVID restrictions and some of the civil unrest that was taking place. But here's a number of the non-member users. We've got them kind of spread out from multiple jurisdictions and counties, not just in the Washington County area, but we're also seeing some from our federal partners and also from Dakota County as well. We do try to keep track a little bit of our social media analytics, and this is important for us because it helps us to understand who our customer base is. We do have two pages. One is the Hero Center MN page, which is for our public safety audience, and then we also have the Hero Shooting Range, which is for our public shooting range audience. So we do have kind of two different categories and clientele. Interesting enough, we're sitting at about 50% men and 50% women who take advantage of our facilities and follow those pages. Revenue and expenditure overview, you can see here the actuals are in red, the budgeted is in blue. You can see that our revenues for 2020 were 3,000, about $309,000. We were budgeted for $486,000, and then our expenditures were $494,000 with our budgeted at $406,000 for 2020. The expense factors to consider in this, this was the first full year of operations, so expenditures exceeded the expectations due to lack of historical budgetary information, and certainly COVID was a major impact to that as well. Hero Center by the numbers, this is just a brief overview of total hours reserved for training space within the facility was about 7,586 hours. We saw about 2,203 hours canceled. Actual hours used was approximately 5,383 hours, and then you can also see a breakdown of Cottage Grove and Woodbury, who are the primary joint owners of the facility, and then you can also see our canceled hours between both agencies. We did have approximately 30 government agencies from various departments come to the facility in 2020. We did have, we actually successfully got a class, civilian class delivered, even though we kind of bounced it in between closures and everything else, but we had 29 people attend our first firearm safety course in November. We had 110 officers from four states attend public safety courses. These are separate from actual facility reservations, and those individuals came from five different states, as well as we had attendees that were going to come from Canada, from the Royal Canadian Mounted Police, but had to cancel due to COVID, and they couldn't cross the border. And then we were able to get the range up and running to the public, open on the weekends in June. We had 595 guests come, and unfortunately, due to COVID and other things, there was a lot of limitations to that as well. This is just an overview of facility usage and availability. Left, the pie chart on the left-hand side, you can see approximately how much percentage of the facility is used due to different owner agencies, non-agency members, and then COVID cancellations as well. We still had about 65% capacity remaining for 2020, and these are also based on the assumptions of Monday through Friday, 8 to 10 PM, and then on the weekends as well. We are already seeing for 2021 a noticeable increase in our traffic for the public range, which is really nice to see, as well as our facility reservations. So key factors to consider for 2021, we have a university contract that has been signed, and I can announce that that is with Rasmus and University. That contract is for $212,000. That contract is for $212,374. What's great about that group is they are nights and weekends, primarily given that that is how their skills program operates. We did extend the federal contract awards with the ICE as well, and we're actually seeing additional that's going to come in from that, because there was additional space that they needed. We did extend the Tier One membership and Tier Two memberships to both Washington County and Oakdale Police Department. Facility reservations are increasing, and we're seeing new agency customers again, with just the announcement last Friday of the mask mandate being released. I already had three departments that I haven't heard from for a year and a half call me on Monday, so that is a great thing. So, on here I had decreased in COVID restrictions, as needed to allow for more course registrations and increased facility usage, and we are seeing that. We also did add the lower-level HOPCOR panels, which will allow for more use of this facility and be able to have multiple agencies on multiple levels. And then we're increasing our civilian training courses, delivering more for our course and safety personnel, and we're also looking to get our CPR courses up and running as these restrictions are starting to lift. And we had some AV upgrades to promote virtual classes, we are seeing a mixture in both in-class and virtual now, with all the changes that have come from 2020. Any questions?
Questions, Councilmember Olson.
Dan, thanks for being here tonight. I know that you have put in countless hours, probably more than you want to count, getting that facility up and running and making sure that you're interfacing with all the various agencies, not just, you know, within the state of Minnesota, but frankly, across the country and internationally to bring folks into that facility. I'm the son of a firefighter, and one of the things I appreciate most is the training opportunities that that facility provides for our Cottage Grove Fire Department and other agencies who might want to use it, in addition to, of course, all of our public safety men and women who, you know, need post certification, all that sort of thing. One thing that I think the public needs to understand, and I didn't really hear you jump on it too much, is the range public use, and then the fee that you charge for that, which is extremely reasonable. Could you touch on that briefly and just talk through, you know, what you do with respect to public use of the firing range, and then what that cost looks like for both resident and non-resident users?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Olson. The range is currently open on the weekends to the public. We're still trying to learn historical data and gather from that, whether or not we can open additional dates, and a lot of that has to do with we're learning how this facility is being utilized by agencies and organizations with its true intended original purpose, but also to have that public citizen access as well. So, the range is open on Saturdays and Sundays, it's currently open 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We do staff it with three certified range safety officers. Woodbury and Cottage Grove residents can get a discounted rate, it is $18 an hour for one-hour lane reservation. You can add an additional shooter on your lane for $11 more. We also do currently have some ammunition available for purchase as well, it's range-friendly ammunition, so it's perfect for our facility. And, yeah, so we've currently got that available to the public, and then we also have the civilian courses that we're really getting out there to the public as well. We've seen a lot of individuals applying for permit to carry in the city, or in the state, that is, and really nationally, they're seeing that. And one of the things we recognize is there's just a lot of new handgun owners, and so we really wanted to kind of provide an opportunity for individuals to take an introduction course, get a little bit more knowledge. We really want to promote safety on the use of firearms. It can be an enjoyable sport, but we definitely want people to be safe. So, we were able to get some of these classes launched, and we have been filling most of our introduction to handgun courses, as well as our permit-to-carry courses, so.
And what's the best way for people to sign up for use of the range? Would you prefer that they go through the website and sign up online, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Go to herocentermn.org, and right on there you'll see a thing, a tab for public, and you can go right there, and you can book your lane online. We were able to create an online reservation system through a third-party vendor to assist us, and it's really user-friendly, and then you're kind of guaranteed, you know when you show up, your lane's going to be waiting for you. You don't have to wait and stand and hope that somebody is done, so.
Thanks for covering that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, thank you also for your hard work. I've had a chance to come down and qualify at the range, and, you know, I had a tremendous amount of confidence about this facility before it even became something. Having my background in law enforcement and being a use-of-force instructor, among other areas, I can tell folks there's a tremendous need and a draw and a desire for this type of application. So, what we have is a fantastic facility, the table, I think, is set for a success, we just have to get through the rest of COVID, and we're working our way there, and I just want to give a personal testimony for any of our members of the community that want to go down and participate. The customer service is excellent, the facility is top-notch, clean, and ready to excite people for a great time. So, thank you for your hard work, and we look forward to more good things happening coming up.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Sounds good. The only other comment I'll mention, which is, it's funny, because we're talking about the public use of it, and just for the general public that may not be aware, part of the process of building this facility was really meant for, frankly, the cities of Cottage Grove and Woodbury, because our officers were having a hard time getting range time, for one, but also, we wanted to provide, I'll call it better training, de-escalation techniques, handling mental illness kind of situations where police officers are put into really difficult situations. And so, part of getting federal money, or state money, I should say, I'm sorry, state money, is the requirement, as part of the state money that helped build this facility, is the use by the local public to be open for the public. So, the ultimate goal for us was to better train officers in handling all kinds of different situations with the various training techniques we have there. The benefit on top of that was the fact that we're able to provide an indoor range and support to our community and anybody that wants to use it, so. Good job, I'm looking forward to seeing, now that all this is starting to come back, you know, that we'll get back into that place being somewhat self-sufficient, so.
Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, councilmembers.
All right, next on our agenda is consent calendar, or consent, I should say, is there anything on our consent calendar that anybody wants to poll? Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to poll item H.
Item H, okay, anybody else? Nothing? All right, Councilmember Olson, item H is Meadowgrass Avenue parking restrictions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this item came to be on our consent agenda due to the fact that we are seeing tremendous usage of the Cottage Grove Bike Park. There's an awful lot of people who really like to use that facility, and of course, that's what it's there for. You know, to give you a little historical context, that facility was actually built by a private group of citizens here in the city of Cottage Grove, and then Zach and his team and the Parks Department partnered with those folks to do some ongoing improvements and maintenance, et cetera. The challenge that we're having is, it is so popular that when people want to use the facility, they like to park right there near it, on Meadowgrass, on both sides of the street, and in many cases, there are larger vehicles that are being parked on the street, because of course, they're carrying bikes and people, et cetera. And what that does is it creates a narrowing of the roadway that makes it challenging for other roadway users to get through safely, especially if there's two, and they're coming in opposite directions. So, at the behest of one of the neighbors who lives up there, you know, we made a recommendation to our staff, specifically to Jennifer and Ryan Burfine, to take a look at that, in addition to Zach and his team, to try to identify if there's a better way that we can, you know, make sure that the park is continuing to be used, but that it is safe for people to travel on the roadway. And what we landed on was this item, which is, I believe, more of a temporary solution. So, Ryan, I'm not sure if you may want to comment on this or not, but essentially, what we're asking is that for certain portions of that roadway, people park on one side only, and that will be marked, is my understanding. Additionally, of course, Meadowgrass Park has a really nice parking lot, and it's quite large. So, what's interesting is, is when I drove through there, I saw that the roadway was very congested due to the parking on both sides of the street, but we had, you know, 30 to 40 parking spaces in the parking lot at the park that were not being used. And so, simultaneously to this change, we're hopeful that we can direct people to use the current parking. And then, I think our longer-term objective is to try to find another solution to accommodate the users of the park with some parking that may be a little bit closer to the bike park, but that's another conversation for another day. Ryan, did I miss anything?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, I think you covered it pretty well. You know, restricting that parking will allow parking on the sidewalk side, so users of the park can use the sidewalk to get to the trail crossing, and then we're really going to want to educate, put some missile signage up at the existing parking lot, we really want to get full use out of that parking lot, you know, in the interim, and make sure we're using that before we look at any expansions.
Sure. And of course, with any change, there's going to be an educational time period that goes by where people need to recognize that, oh my goodness, they're doing something different here, before we would get in any sort of enforcement conversation, is that correct?
I would say that's correct. That's something we'll work with our public safety team on, to see how we want to handle that. You know, once we get to the point where we put these signs up, we'll be in touch with them, and you're right, it'll take some time for folks to get used to it, but we want to make sure it's nice, clear signage, and something that should be easy to follow, so.
Good. And do we have any intent to post anything on social media, or talk through sort of the change in that at some point, so people who may not be watching at home right now, or watch the replay of this meeting, get informed about what we're doing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, that's definitely something that we can do, we can work with our communications manager, Scott Soroka, I think, you know, we have a big following on Facebook, whatever's the most appropriate way to get it out there, and to have the encouragement to use that Westerau parking lot as well.
Absolutely, well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing nothing else was pulled on consent, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, if you were here for anything that was on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Eight is approved disbursements, eight A is pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is nine, is public hearings. We do have two public hearings this evening. The first one is the Hy-Vee Special Event Permit, State Fair Event, and our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, is going to walk us through actually both of these, but we'll start with this one. Welcome, Pete.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back, especially to talk about the special events, we're starting to get a lot more interest, some of the local churches just put things in, so we're starting to see the fall festivals already getting planned and whatnot. So, through this presentation, I did summarize quite a bit of it, both the memorandums that were in the packet were pretty detailed with all the conditions, so I'll kind of skip through some of those, but I want to highlight the ones that I feel are more important. But, yeah, Hy-Vee, they did apply for two special events, the first one I'm going to cover is the State Fair food trucks, very similar to what they did last year, and I can say last year, public safety, we had zero complaints, and I will bring up one slide with kind of the placements where we need to be a little more specific on where the trucks are, but we'll cover that, too. The application has been distributed to public safety and other departments, any of us that require any kind of special services had an opportunity with staff to review these, and we did send out the public hearing notice back on April 26th, and I talked to Neil today, I don't believe we had any comments back, but tonight, obviously, the council review and approval of the permit. They plan on hosting this over Memorial Day weekend, last year, I think it was towards the end of August that they held that, so. State Fair location, where it's kind of in the box there, we are going to have to move that a little bit, just with the ordinance with food trucks, they have to be about three, they have to be 300 feet from the property line to any of the established, our food establishments such as Arby's and McDonald's, so we're very aware of that, and we'll work with the manager when they set up. Last year, when they kind of set up and we went to the inspection, they're already done, you know, so it was a challenge to move things around, so we have a more specific time now that we'll be meeting with them, so. In the memorandum, we do have everything, and I'll cover a couple things with the preparedness plan and food sales, but everything else remains incident action plan, they have severe weather, they go inside. We're pretty specific on traffic, emergency lanes going through cones, barricades, different things that we'll work with them, so. Here's the new language, and there is a couple changes from what in your packet, because obviously, when we did the review in the last two weeks, things have changed with the executive order and the CDC recommendations, so most of the changes that you're going to see are just with the mask mandates have been removed out of that, and it's still up to the business if they want to, if any kind of recommendations that they may have. So, however, this is just the one line that will be removed from what you have in the package, as well as here, any reference to the wearing of the face coverings, we're just, we're following CDC recommendations and what the executive order says, so. So, with food trucks, all the same requirements, and I can tell you already, we did reach out to Washington County Public Health, and Eric Jensen, who works in the government building next door, he's already been in contact with them, so they're ahead of the game, so when they do come to set up, we already have both the state and also our county's already working with them on the food trucks. And here's the one part I did mention, last year, it did get brought to our attention that they were a little closer than that 300 feet, so we're going to be very specific with them to make sure that setup does meet that, and also, we get them in the right spots so we can have emergency access around them. With that, I'll turn it back over to you on this one, then.
All right, sounds good. Council, any questions on this item? All right, I guess to be official, because it is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on this item, either for or against it, either in the audience or online? If you're online, you'll have to raise your hand. Not seeing anybody, so I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this one, and Council, you can see the motions before you, or motion, I should say.
Well, I'll go ahead and move that we authorize issuance of a special event permit to Hy-Vee Incorporated contingent upon conditions outlined in the memo from Public Safety Director Kerner and Community Development Director Boike dated May 11th, 2021, in all applicable state and local statutes.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Councilmember Olson.
In the motion on our screen, there is verbiage that says, "Continued upon conditions outlined in the memo and the mentioned strike-through from Public Safety Director Kerner and Community Development Director Boike," which is not in the packet, and I believe Councilmember Thede.
You read it off there.
Read it off the packet, so do we need to amend our motion, is that necessary?
I'll let our attorney, I don't think so, because I think we're good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Sorry, I always have trouble with the mics. Thank you, Your Honor. Since the motion was incorrectly stated, I suggest you just repeat it with the correct language, and then it's clear.
Okay, so do you want to do that? Yeah, read it off the screen.
All right, then I would move to authorize issuance of a special event permit to Hy-Vee Incorporated contingent upon conditions outlined in the memo and the mentioned strike-throughs from Public Safety Director Kerner and Community Development Director Boike dated May 11th, 2021, in all applicable state and local statutes.
All right, so that's the official motion.
And I will second for the second time.
Councilmember Thede, and second by Councilmember Olson. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll go to B, which is another Hy-Vee event.
Yep, very similar to the food truck event, this one is the only difference with the drive-in movie event, so pretty much all the conditions that we had for the other event stand for this one as well. They plan on doing this on Sunday, June 6th, they'll be doing admission for this, they'll start setting up at 5:00 p.m., and the movie starts at 9:00. Originally, they were talking about Mighty Ducks, and now, today, they put online that they're asking the public for, I think they're looking at the Sandlot, or up to four different movies that they're considering, so. They're going to put this near where their large Hy-Vee sign is there, and they'll use that portion of the parking lot. We don't have a lot of, people will be in their cars, just like at the old drive-in, but we will have some cones, so once the movie, we won't have customer traffic driving around there, it'll be more contained, and Hy-Vee will have staff there helping with that. They didn't feel as though they needed any public safety, you know, reserve officers, but we did offer that up if it is busy or something, or for future events, so. They are renting a 60-foot inflatable screen from Ultimate Outdoor Entertainment. Our city official, our building official, Bob LaBrasse, has been in contact with the company just for some specifications on this. We just want to make sure when they do set it up that it's been secured properly, you know, especially with different weather conditions, so that's the one thing, they don't need any other additional building permits, no stages or anything, but we did want our building official to be down there Sunday night to make sure everyone's safe, so. This is the exact same language that we just had for the last, and there was the same changes with the mask requirements. So, with that, we'll turn it back over to you, unless you have some questions.
All right, any questions on this item? All right, same thing, we'll go ahead, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody is a public hearing, so if there's anybody that wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time. I didn't see anybody on the last one, and it's not looking like it on this one. If we're okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and then once again, we'll make a motion off the screen.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to authorize issuance of a special event permit to Hy-Vee Incorporated contingent upon conditions outlined in the memo and the mentioned strike throughs from Public Safety Director Kerner and Community Development Director Boike dated May 11, 2021, in all applicable state and local statutes.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion, Counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pete. All right. Next on our agenda is 10 is bid awards are earned in this evening. 11 is the regular agenda. The first item on our agenda this evening is the sale of $3,955 general obligation improvement bonds 2021A, and our finance director, Robin Rowland, will take us through this one. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Back on April 21, you authorized staff to proceed with a sale of bonds to fund the 2021 pavement management project. The amount of the bonds was $3.955 million, and that will be partially repaid with special assessments. The bond sale actually took place at 10 o'clock this morning. Shelley Eldridge from Ellers is here to give us the results of the bond sale. The results were in fact emailed to you this afternoon as part of the date, the sale date report, as well as our most recent bond rating from Standard and Poor's, which we're very proud of. We thought it was a very good report and, you know, certainly something that we've worked very hard towards. So Shelley's going to talk about the bonds, and then at the end, we would ask you to authorize the award or the issuance and the award of those bonds. The direction on that is in the council packet on the agenda item. Okay?
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Shelley, welcome back. It's been a while.
It has. I've missed you. We all missed a whole year, but besides that, it's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor and council members, again. As Robin said, we received bids this morning on the city's $3,955,000 bonds. We received five of them, and they came in a little bit lower than we had expected, and they also came in with a premium bid. And I'm going to talk, I've been told keep it short and sweet, but because you have a long agenda. I'm going to talk a little bit about the premium bid. Some of you have heard this before, but just to remind you what a premium bid is. And I'm going to use my little analogy of financing a car. When you go to finance, you find your brand-new, beautiful car that you're going to purchase, you go to the finance person, the finance person says, we've got two programs. The first program is a very, very low or zero interest rate for a short period of time. The second program we have is you use regular interest rates or regular financing, but we're going to give you a rebate. And that rebate you can use to write down your financing and bring your total costs down, or you can take and use that for rust proofing or whatever you want to add to your vehicle, or you can use that to write down your down payment. So that's what we receive. We don't have the choice when we receive a premium bid, so it's like the rebate on the car. So the choices are to lower the bond amount, use it for projects, or write down the cash that the city was planning on putting towards the project. And that's the choice this time. Quite often, we'll write down that bond. But in this particular instance, because there was quite a bit of cash, about $490,000, we were able to write, to use $130,000 of that premium, so that the city's only needing to use $360,000 of their cash. So you're able to save some cash to use for other projects. And so that was, that's how this one's rolling. So you guys kind of have a little of each of them when we do these sometimes. And depending on the circumstances of how the whole financing is put together, the best use this time was to write down and save the city's cash. And so the payments aren't substantially different over, it's like $5,000 a year more in payments than what we had anticipated, which, so that's kind of the upshot of keeping those dollars in the city's coffers. So again, we received, we received five bids. The winning bid was 1.39%. The coupons were a little bit higher than that, but we've got the offsetting cash. Let's see. The bid tab is included. It shows who did bid. The winning bidder was Northland Securities out of Minneapolis in conjunction with United Bankers Bank and D.A. Davidson. And they did come in at the 1.39. The next bidder was out of Minneapolis as well, Piper Sandler, at 1.42. So there was only like three basis points between the first and the second bidder. And then the other ones, there's out of Wisconsin, Tennessee, and Alabama. So again, it was more than just regional bidders. There was national interest in the cities, investing in the city. So we believe that, given the closeness of the bids, it's like, what, 13 basis points, less than, less than a quarter of a percent between the high and low, we believe that you received really, really the best bids that were out there for the market. If it was, you know, if we were looking at 2.5%, we'd be going, eh, not such a good idea. But we think we've got really good bids, which is, oh goodness, what are we, we are about 18 basis points less than what we had anticipated when we called for the sale last month. So the true interest cost is, in fact, lower than we anticipated and right where we think it should be. Your bond proceeds, your bond proceeds will remain the same, because again, we reduced the amount that you needed to contribute in cash. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Well, first of all, great bids, very, very, very good. And obviously, kudos, Robin, to you and the team for continuing to manage the budget very tightly. And obviously, we're getting some good reviews, if you will, by our bond rating, and very, very close for a city of our size to be a AAA, which is absolutely amazing. So that's pretty cool. Councilmember Olson, do you have something?
Shelley, good to see you. Thanks so much for always taking such great care of us. For as long as I've been on the council, you and your team have been just amazing to work with. And I know that you work very closely with Robin and her team on ensuring that we get the very best bids when we go out for bond. It's super encouraging to see that we got the five bids, and there were some premium bids in there, which doesn't always happen. That means that the market likes our paper, which is nice. Would you just briefly touch on a couple of highlights from the actual report around our bond rating that, you know, really stood out with respect to not only maintaining our AA+, but, you know, putting us on the cusp of, you know, potentially a AAA rating? As Mayor Bailey said, for a city of our size, that's just not very common at all. And I think it's something that the public needs to know about, because it speaks to the way that our staff really manages our finances so well here in the city of Cottage Grove.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, the way a rating happens is we spend an hour going over all sorts of different things, and there's any number of, in the report, each of those areas. There's a substantial discussion about each of the areas that they note in the rating report. Some of them, the city council has control over. You have control over your budget. You have control over your reserves. You don't have a whole lot of control over your economy. You know, there's a few things that you can do to keep the economy going, but, you know, you kind of, you kind of got to roll with the economy. And so we go through this whole discussion, and then Standard and Poor's has an analyst who takes the discussion that we had and the answers to the questions to a committee. And that committee looks at the entire United States. Cities very similar to Cottage Grove, and they have a discussion about what to do about that rating. Where are you at with relationship to other communities with like economics and that type of thing. Then the committee decides on the rating, and then the analyst will call me. And this time, the analyst said, where's my notes? He said that the committee had a lengthy discussion or conversation about the city of Cottage Grove. And usually, when they have a lengthy discussion, I go [laugh]. But what he said was that there's more pressure on the upside. And so that, basically, he said that the committee decided that you were still a little closer to that AA+. But if the, and as they say, point out in the rating report, if the city, if you maintain your reserves at the level they are, and your property values continue to rise, they anticipate that you'll get that elusive AAA. And that is, that's a big deal. When you go from section to section, it's a, you will see better rates in your future bonds. So it's kind of a matter of time. They, they thought a lot about it, and they talked about it, and you're not quite there. But if things keep going and your, your building keeps going, you'll be there, maybe not in the next year, maybe in the next two or three. So, and again, you know, in Minnesota, it's with the property values, it takes two years for your building to catch up to your values. So what's being built today, you won't see on your property values until '23. So that's kind of, you know, all of, all of what's going on now will roll into, and so keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other comments, Counsel, at this point?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. And great job to all of you and, and again, staff. It was awesome to see those positive comments.
I think I told Robin when I read through the report, I don't, I don't remember seeing a rating report this good in, how long have I been working?
29 years.
Twenty, no, no, I'm 20-
You started as a baby.
I started when I was four, so 20, 25 years. But I hadn't, I really, truly haven't seen a report this good, when, I mean, there's so, everything is strong. And when they say, when they say strong and very strong, that's wonderful. So there was nothing in this report that wasn't top-notch. Like I said, I haven't seen a report this good in my 24 years of doing what I'm doing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
So I would ask if you would consider adoption of the resolution 2021-066, which would authorize issuance and sale of the bonds to Northland Securities.
All right. Who would like to take that one?
Motion to move that.
All right. You good with that? We're good? All right. Councilmember Dennis made the motion, second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you. All right. All right. Next on our, our regular agenda is B, which is the Settlers Bluff Preliminary Platte, and our community development director, Ben Boike, is going to take us through this one.
All right. Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Capstone Homes Incorporated, who is requesting approval for a zoning amendment, as well as a preliminary plat for the development of 39.7 acres of land, which is located on the southwest corner of Hadley Avenue South and 100th Street South. So first application, again, being for a zoning amendment. The property is currently zoned AG2, which is agricultural. The applicant is proposing to rezone to R5 medium-density residential, which includes a planned unit development. As you can see with the upper picture, in terms of the comp plan, the property is guided for medium-density residential use, which allows for five to 13 units per acre. This development coming in at the bottom end of that, therefore, the proposed rezoning does align with the comp plan in terms of development of the property. So in terms of the proposal itself, as reviewed with the concept plan a couple of months back, Capstone is proposing their Liberty Series detached townhomes, which we have a depiction of kind of at the top there of what that looks like. 155 units, I think it's one less unit than we saw with the concept plan, varying elevations and floor plans. And really, the unique thing about this is it's, again, a detached townhome project. So HOA maintained grass and lawn for each resident, as well as snow removal. Capstone does have developments ongoing in Ramsey, St. Michael, and Andover with a similar product. Again, that HOA component being attractive to a variety of home buyers, including first-time home buyers, all the way up to empty nesters. This is a new product type for Cottage Grove and does help provide that full-spectrum housing that the city is looking for. And again, just to note, concept plan was approved by council back in February. So really, the largest change we've seen since the concept plan approval, which is on the left side, is the access, the second access. So northern access is being provided via an extension of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, which remains consistent. However, in discussing kind of the realignment of 100th Street, future realignment of 100th Street with the county, also in hearing feedback from the neighbors to the north, this access has moved. With the submitted preliminary plat, that access was moved further to the north and east at this location, which at the time was, made the most sense with that realignment and discussions with the county. However, since then, we've had additional discussions where that access has moved further north, directly off Hadley, which makes more sense for future connection to the east, and also helps to alleviate concerns with increased traffic going north on Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. So we really think that through this process, we've kind of evolved into the best-case scenario in terms of how that access looks. And the developer's been great in working with the city and the county on providing that. Sidewalks and trails are proposed, so the blue is showing the sidewalks within the site plan. The red is a new trail. If you may recall, there's an existing east-west trail on the south end of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, or estates. So this trail will connect into that and provide a link back into the neighborhood. And then with the extension of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, we're also showing, or proposing a crosswalk in the location shown there. Oops, wrong way. So as with the concept plan, this hasn't changed. The proposal is for 40-foot wide lots and five-foot side yard setbacks. This is why the PUD is required to allow those, that lot size. And again, those requirements in the R5 district are based on single-family lots, whereas this is a townhome product. Again, with, as reviewed during the concept plan, since the homes are 10 feet apart, they need the vertical intake in terms of air intake into the roof. So instead of having your typical horizontal intake, it's vertical, which helps present fires from spreading to structure to structure. This has been reviewed by both the building official and public safety, and they have approved it. Just to give you a sense of architecture, one- and two-story product with tuck-under garages. There are no garage forwards, so they're all flush with the front of the home, and they also have front-covered porches. There was a neighborhood meeting held on April 20, where seven residents attended the meeting. Various questions were raised at that meeting regarding density, proposed infiltration areas, again, increased traffic and speed on Mississippi Dunes Boulevard, proposed buffers along the north and east- along the north and east side, which the plan is providing, as well as safety concerns with the trail crossing that I mentioned of Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. And finally, whether or not a stop sign could be located at Mississippi Dunes Boulevard and 98th Street. Moving to the Planning Commission meeting on April 26, similar concerns were raised. Again, increased traffic on Mississippi Dunes Boulevard. Again, we think that access change will help alleviate that, some of that. Safety invisibility concerns with the crosswalk. It is, does have signage leading northbound and southbound of the crosswalk and proper angles. In addition, the fact that that road is at 30 miles per hour, so staff is confident on the safety with that crosswalk. And finally, the request for a four-way stop, which the traffic count simply do not warrant at this time. So that was reviewed by our, our public works team and again, not warranted based on those current traffic volumes. So with that, Planning Commission voted 5-1 in recommending approval, with the dissenting vote being Commissioner Frazier. So with that, I'll leave the recommendation up for you, Mr. Mayor, and stand for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for, for Ben at all? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Is the developer here? Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't, looking right past you there. If you just want to state your name and address for the record, if you have anything you want to add.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Bakker Gies with Capstone Homes. We're located at 14015 Sunfish Lake Boulevard in Ramsey. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and answer any questions that you might have. This will be the seventh public meeting we've had, plus the neighborhood meeting. And I think every time we've had these meetings, it's always got a better result to it. And so I think we've answered many of the questions and resolved some of the solutions and so forth through this process. I do not have a presentation tonight. Ben did a great job in summarizing our project. We're excited to get moving. Just to give you a perspective that even though the plan, the site plan elements stayed the same, even though the, the plan evolved over time, the detached townhome product type, which allows for every type of home buyer, if it's a single, married, young couple, active adults. And then of course, we have the trail corridor that we're proposing and the trail with that. And it's over 2,500 linear feet of, of trail. So besides acting as a neighborhood trail, it also acts as a regional trail. So they'll be connecting to the existing trails to the north and also to the bike area that's to the southeast. So we're very excited in keeping, moving this forward. Our plan is to start grading at the end of June and then come back for final plat and then start utilities sometime early August. We're going to do it in two phases. First phase will be 75, 78 lots. Second phase will be 77. We will grade the entire site this year. So.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for working with staff on some of the traffic concerns or the, the access, I guess I would say. I thought that was the final result. As a matter of fact, when I saw the packet came, I called Ben right away and I said, oh, this is different from the other one. It looks better because it's more of a direct access out to the, the main road there. So I think that, that worked out really good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
You got it. Council, any questions for the developer? All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
So just, I, I think it'll be good for me just to make a comment real quick right now. So all three, this one and the other two that are coming before us here in just a few minutes are not public hearings. However, as I have, as a council or a mayor, I have always allowed the opportunity for the, the public to speak. And so before I open it, the opportunity for anyone who wants to speak on this particular item, all I would just ask is that you do state your name and address for the record. And you get two minutes to share your information with us. We won't necessarily be answering those questions immediately when you share them. I've asked staff to please take some notes so that we can provide the opportunity to answer any questions that may come up in any of these three particular development proposals. So with that being said, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this particular item? Whether it's out here in the live audience or online, because we do have a few people online. And if you are online, again, if you'd raise your hand. And I'm not seeing it on either. And so since I'm not seeing any, anybody that has comments, there are two motions before us. If somebody wants to take the first one.
Mayor, I'll make the first motion for us to adopt ordinance 1041 approving the zoning amendment to change the zoning of property located at the southwest corner of Hadley Avenue South and 100th Street South from AG2 agricultural to R5 medium density residential with a PUD planned unit development.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then the second.
I will move that we adopt resolution 2021-072 approving the preliminary plat for a residential subdivision to be called Settlers Bluff, which will consist of 155 units of detached townhomes.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Bethidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Good luck. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is, we're down to C, which is the Hardwood subdivision, which is the Apodan Development. And Matt Wolf, you will be taking us through this one. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. As you stated tonight before you is the Apodan Development regarding the Weber parcel, which is a multi, or market rate multifamily high-density development. The parcel in question is an 8.45 acre parcel, which is owned by the Weber family. That's where it gets the name, the Weber parcel. It is located just to the north of the shops at Gateway North, as well as in between Hardwood Avenue and Harkness Avenue. A little bit of history on the area in question. Back in October of 2017, the, the city of Cottage Grove did a Harkness Avenue small area study. And as part of that, the council adopted a resolution 2017-1-146 to modify the land use in this area of the 55 acres to both medium density residential and high-density residential. The change that was addressed really was part of addressing our 2017 strategic plan that wanted, we wanted to ensure that there were housing options for everyone. So really, one of the questions then that we were asking as part of that, why did we choose this area? Well, there was a number of reasons, but overall, really, this site has excellent proximity to the 80th Street Commercial District, as well as Oakwood Park and the walkability that exists, obviously with the 80th Street District, access to the retail shops and the restaurants and those amenities. It also allows you to transition from commercial, high-density, medium, and then single-family as well. So looking at those options, that was one of the reasons this area was picked for that change in the concept plan, change in the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry. Additionally, as part of that resolution has been mentioned, was there any need for environmental study or anything of that nature at the time? As it was just a comprehensive plan amendment at that time, there was no EAW or ES that was required. Additionally, the unit count as part of this development additionally does not trip that environmental study either. So looking at the land use, as you can see there from the 2040 comprehensive plan, it is high-density residential, guided that way. The proposal with this development would see 20.2 units per acre. So the low side, our comp plan calls out for the density to be 20 to 40 units per acre. And again, we're at 20.2. As part of the proposal before you tonight, we are asking for a rezoning of the property. Right now, it is divided essentially in half with the west side being R2, or I'm sorry, the left side being urban reserve, or UR, and the right side being R2 residential estate. And we're asking to rezone the property to R6 high-density residential with a PUD. So looking at the site plan overall, this is a four-story market rate apartment building. Really want to stress that it is market rate. There is no subsidy or anything like that. It's one of the things we're really clear about in this area, that we want market rate apartments and development here. The site access for the property will be off Hardwood. You can see it here. One of the things that we do have included is the right-hand turn lane. There is no left-hand turn lane that is depicted, but that is being required and something that the, the developer will be designing as part of this as well. So there's been a lot of talk of can Hardwood Avenue actually handle this kind of traffic? Well, Hardwood Avenue is arterial roadway, so it can handle up to 18,000 vehicles per day. Right now, the latest updated traffic counts through MINDOT has about 8,600 counts per day. So as part of this development, what we're looking at about four trips per day per unit. So that would add about 684 trips per day. So that would bring our total to around 9,214 for this area. So still within that definition of what we can handle there on Hardwood Avenue. Further looking at the site plan, they will be required to have an emergency access area here off Harkness Avenue. That will be, that will have knockdown ballards, so the regular general public can't get in and out, but our EMS, public safety team will still be able to get in through a second access way in case there ever is an emergency that we need that access. Additionally, we are having a preliminary plat and final plat that is before you today. Eventually, we do plan, as this area continues to develop, to reconstruct Harkness. So you can see here about 40 feet of land along the eastern side of the plat is being dedicated as right-of-way for the future redevelopment of Harkness Avenue. The site will have 145 underground parking spaces. Additionally, we'll have 162 surface parking spaces, so it does meet the parking requirements, the two-to-one, two parking spaces for every one unit that we do require. I will just note that these areas here are just proof of parking, so it won't be initially developed. If parking does become an issue on site, we will be requiring developer to install those. As part of this, the neighborhood did, a neighborhood meeting was also held on April 15th of 2021. So looking at the unit, unit count in the internal building, we have 170 units, 24 units will be studio, 78 will be one-bedroom, eight will be one-bedroom plus den, and then 49 will be two-bedroom units and 12 will be three-bedroom units. And the entrance will be here. This is just the first floor of the plan, kind of gives you an idea of the overall layout and the mix, similar as you go up, similar layout and mix as well. So looking at trails and sidewalks, we are, again, as I mentioned, having that access off Hardwood. One of the things that I did just want to mention as well before you tonight, additionally, as with the stormwater being here, we do have a stormwater maintenance agreement being before you. Additionally, as it is going through the right-of-way, we do have an encroachment agreement as well. As Hardwood Avenue is obviously a place that we have very beautiful trails that we have access to, we are making sure that any sort of access, that they reconstruct those trails to our specifications. Additionally, we will be asked, having them install a sidewalk that goes south to connect with the 80th Street's Commercial District, so the residents can access those commercial areas. Currently, as I mentioned, we are going to be reconstructing Harkness in the future. So we won't have any sidewalk here on the north, northbound going up. Obviously, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. And since we're reconstructing that, we would just have to dig it back up. As part of this, we are requiring a deferred assessment for that Harkness area. So that includes that sidewalk that will eventually be developed when we redo Harkness. So looking at the landscaping, tree preservation, and open space, we've had a lot of discussions of, you know, this is a very heavily wooded tree area, trying to save as many trees as possible. We've been working with the developer to do that. Overall, the site did have 743 qualifying trees per our ordinance. In total, the developer was able to save or keep 266 trees, and they would be removing 477 trees. One of the things that we will be requiring as a result of that is $92,100 in tree mitigation fees. I did just want to touch that many of the trees that are on the east side will be remained for a buffer from Harkness for those properties across the street. Obviously, that will only really be a buffer to that first floor parking lot, but it still is important to mention, you know, the lighting that are coming from cars, we want to maintain that buffer so it's not shedding across the street. Looking at the landscaping, we are requiring 90 deciduous trees. They are providing 197, 18 coniferous, they're providing 33, and then shrubs, 474 required, and they're providing 596 on site. So architecture of the building, that was one of the things that we really found important with this project. Obviously, this is a very beautiful area of the city and we want to maintain that beauty as we move forward. Although currently, we don't have an exterior material requirement for our residential. That is one of the things as we're working through adjusting and updating our code that we are looking to require. However, we did want to hold the standard that we have seen in the past with some of our architectural standards with high-density residential. So meeting that 40% Class 1 materials per, you know, what we have with our commercial building. So looking at class, glass, stone, copper panels, mirror windows, window panels such as that. Further, based on the feedback when Apodan came and did a concept plan, one of the things they showed us was Loa 46. And one of the things we heard very clearly is that we really liked that, kind of that fake wood, faux wood paneling that was on that. So one of the things that we had Apodan do was include that, and they're adding about 17% the exterior architectural in those materials. So overall, that brings the total exterior materials in terms of premium materials to 57%. If you look at the past, since 2016, some of our past projects, Allegiance has been at 34, Presbyterian's, their Presbyterian homes, their expansions at 32, and Grove 80 is at 42. So what we're really seeing here is a higher increase in standards in materials and exterior, and what we want to carry forward as we move forward north in the Harkness area, the future development is continuing that standard to make sure we really hold this to, to, you know, the beauty that we see in the area. So looking at those elevations, you can see there the stone that I mentioned is on the lower level here. Then that, that kind of fake wood that we mentioned here, which there's an image on the next, is the second and third, and then that, the windows make up the third Class 1 material. So here's an image of Loa 46 that we saw before, that is that wood paneling, give you an idea of what it looks like from their previous project. So another thing that we had the developer do is give some cross-sections to give you an idea of what the building will look like from different vantage points around it. From this one, you can see in front, standing in front of the shops at Gateway North, looking up, you can see the parapet there sticking above, sticking above the shops. Just to give you an idea again of what it looks like across the street from Harkness, again, you're not able to see that landscaping that will be here, that's going to be maintained. So it will give that buffer at least from the first level. Obviously, you'll still be able to see a second level and above from across Harkness, but give a little bit of, of light, light shelter from across the street. This is a view of if you're standing at the edge of the circle in Aspen Cove. The building is at 846 at base elevation with the 57 feet of elevation, that would put it at 903. So this is about 11 feet above the elevation of the building. So with full foliage in the spring, summer, fall, still be very hard if, or completely blocked out. Obviously, in the winter, you'll still be able to see the building slightly, and you can kind of tell where that elevation is here on the, on the image. Additionally, then looking at Meadowgrass Curve, similar, 846. This one is actually at 930 feet. In this case, again, full elevation of the building here would be 903 feet. Such as a little bit higher, you actually are looking down more at a curve, so you will be able to see more of the top of the building as you look down from Meadowgrass Curve. And then as you're walking around, walking down the trails in Hardwood, just to give you an idea of what the building will look like from there. So there was a public hearing held on Monday, April 26, as part of the Planning Commission meeting. Some of the concerns that were raised in terms of the project, as we mentioned, can Hardwood Avenue handle this increased traffic? Kind of talked through that. Why does Cottage Grove need more density? And the concern was apartment buildings, or why did we choose the specific location? Obviously, touched a little bit upon that. And then one of the other concerns was back in 2017 when it was passed, one of the proposed additions that Planning Commission that recommended that time talked about overall percentage of land that needed to be assembled before we would consider some planning application. I won't touch upon that. If there are questions upon that, I know our city attorney, Cory Land, has an answer for that, so I'll turn it over for, to her to, to kind of answer that question if we have any. In terms of the overall vote, it was 5-1 in recommending approval, with the one dissenting vote coming from Commissioner Bing. So with you, with that, before you tonight is four resolutions. The screen does have updated versions that does include the resolution number and ordinance number, so that is where the best spot to read from. If with that, I know the developer, Apodan and Paul Tucci is here. I know he wants to speak a little bit. So I'll turn it over to the mayor and council for comments or questions.
All right. First of what I'll do is see if council has questions. Councilmember Bethidi.
Yeah, ma'am, could you go back to the, the sight line from Hardwood? I'm trying to, okay, so that is depicting the driveway in. Okay, so that's, first I thought that was the, the curve, and I was going to say that doesn't look right. So that's the driveway in off of Hardwood.
Correct. Yes.
All right. Why don't I do this, though, since you did bring up the one, oh, I'm sorry, council only know the questions at this point? Okay. Why don't Cory, if you would, because I know that was a comment, I did watch the Planning Commission meeting, there was a comment about that initial assembly of land or whatever within that particular area, and that was not approved by the council. And maybe you want to share with the public why that might be the case, or was the case, I should say.
Certainly, Your Honor, members of the council. So as you know, whenever a land use application comes before you, the council can put reasonable conditions on an approval. Encumbering a property to prevent an owner from being able to sell the property as they deem. deem fit and as the council has enacted legislation that they would comply with, so if there are comp plan regulations, zoning regulations, planning applications, they comply with all of the books, all of the things that you have enacted to tell the world how you want your community to develop, but then tell them they can't develop it until there's a certain landmassing or a certain percentage of land in the area that is ripe for development, is an unreasonable requirement when you already have all of the other rules in place. So you've already put reasonable regulations in your book on what the site plan has to look like, the setbacks, the architectural features, all of the things that you have put in place intentionally to guide your development as you see fit are already taking care of the issue that would presumably, the condition of landmassing so that it can be orderly development, is then an unreasonable restriction because you've already guided it appropriately in how the development can occur. So that would, that would be potentially, to a developer, an inverse condemnation case or a taking because you have put an unreasonable condition that you should not, you should, you don't need to do because you already have the regulations in place to protect the public.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's why I wanted to just make sure, because I do, I was on the council at that time, so I want to make sure everybody was aware of what that purpose was for that comment. All right, thank you. So Matt, that's it, I think, at the moment for council. Developer, you want to speak on anything up there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Paul Tucci, I'm with Opadan. Thanks for having me today. Matt really did a good job of covering everything, just a few talking points. We were in front of the group at a concept workshop, geez, seems like a couple of months ago, we all had masks on. A lot of people don't today, so that's good to see that we're moving forward. And a couple of things that we heard loud and clear were the design features of the building and just making sure that we looked at it from all angles. Matt showed you our cross-sections so we could see what was there. But the big thing is, we did incorporate the Nichiha, it's a Nichiha faux panel, same thing that we used down at Loa Forty-Six. We've put it on a couple of other buildings. Actually, you'll see it on a few retail buildings, too. It's a very popular system to use. So I did want to stress that we heard you loud and clear. We had to figure out how to get that into the budget, but we made that change, and as Matt said, we're up to about fifty-seven percent on our premium materials. One of the things that, when we first started into this, that we discussed, and it was asked a couple of times through the different discussions, process, neighborhood meetings, and Matt did touch on this, it is, this is not a subsidized project, this is market rate. At the neighborhood meeting, a question was asked of me about where do you think the rents are going to be? Depending on the, they're going to be, the smaller units are a little more per foot, obviously a little less overall. The ranges that we are kind of identifying are between one thousand and about twenty-five hundred dollars, depending on if you have a small studio that's on a lower floor in the middle versus a big two-bedroom on the corner of the fourth floor looking southwest and getting the good evening sun. So it's all going to depend on where you are, but that gives you a range, and I would tell you those are not, none of those rents would qualify, and I'd look to Ben and Matt to say in the Met Council's affordability range, those are not qualifying rents. This is a true market rate housing project. We did do a market study, there is a demand. The market study takes in, they call it the primary trade area, and it takes your neighbor to the north into consideration, everyone up and down, I don't like to say that word when I'm here, up and down the highway into account, and there is need, even though Woodbury has built a number of units, there still is need in the area and specifically in Cottage Grove for the diversification of housing. That is what our market study said, and reading some of your materials on your comp plan, it is in line. Matt, I hope I do this right. Oops, wrong way. Just wanted to show a few, this is, for those in the audience and watching at home, these are, council, you've seen a few of these before, this is what we talked about at our workshop. This gives you an idea, this is a rendered view of what a clubroom would look like in the facility. You can see the couches, chairs, they're right on the corner, you can see the corner of a pool table rendered in there. Kind of another shot looking across, you can see the bar area, prep area, if you had a party in there. Deck areas with grills and lights amenities for all residents to use. We don't have a good picture, I wish we had a good picture of the workout rooms. There will be workout facilities in here, other flex space for media rooms, might have a little movie theater place in one, we're doing that in one we're working on right now. This gives you an idea of a kitchen in these units, you know, the laminate hardwood floors, stainless steel appliances, the sconces coming down, kind of the living space, obviously this one showing it furnished, everybody, we don't provide furnished units, you get to decide what you want to do on your own there. And just, this is a project that we're doing down in another community, but just kind of gives you the feel, we have the same entry working here, give you a feel what you're looking at coming in, and then you walk in, and here's a view of what the lobby would look like. Again, I want to stress that this is a market rate apartment project, and our goal when we come into communities is we want to make sure we're at the top of the market for the consumer. You know, we want to be deemed best in class, so we do little things to make sure that we have, you know, everyone does their units pretty well in this arena, but you want to make sure that the edges are good. You want to make sure you have nice entries, nice common space for use. So that's what I wanted to make sure that we showed. With that, I think I will stop and just answer any questions that anyone on the council may have.
Council, any questions at this point for the developer? No, I guess not. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. As I mentioned before, if there is somebody that wants to speak on this item, well, the council's here to listen. You got up to two minutes to speak on this item, and then council will take notes if there is any, and then we'll answer any questions that may come about. And I do see Mr. Brian Buffy online that wants to speak on this item, I believe. Brian, are you there? We're working on it.
All right, I think that's it.
There you go. All right, Brian.
Thank you.
By the way, Brian, if you would, just state your name and address for the record, please, thank you.
I will. Yep, Brian Buffy. I live at seventy-five oh five Meadowgrass Cove South. And for those of you on the council here, the rendering with the blue house, that's my house. So my view will be, I think it's sightline C, I think, from the Opadan plan. So two things I just wanted to talk about here. First was the assemblage of land conversation. I appreciate Ms. Land, you laying that out for us. And although I'm not here to argue this at this point or belabor the point, I would say that from a taking standpoint, that the, forgive me here, I'm losing my thought, the taking of land from a developer, if something is previously zoned for that property, I would fully agree. And when we were having the discussion in 2017 around the adoption of the small area plan study and the adoption of that, one of the major points that really was kind of used to settle down, I guess, the opposition of the, of the study was, and the adoption of the study was this idea of this assemblage of land and really taking a good look at how we're going to develop not only this property, but the properties to the north along Harkness and hardwood. And so although I don't agree, I do respect that it seems like we're taking a very smart, logical approach to what we're doing here. And I just want to give a huge shout out to both Mr. Wolf and Jennifer Levitt for the time that they've taken to just address a lot of the concerns that frankly I brought to the member, I'm sorry, the neighborhood meeting hosted by Mr. Tucci and Matt, and then also within the planning meeting that I was unable to attend. So I wanted to say just thank you for listening to us, residents that have been here, that came here for the greenery, for the nature, for the trails, for all those things. I understand, once again, that development is something that's needed and wanted and that there is demand for it within walkable areas around Cottage Grove here. What I'd ask the council to consider as we continue to go along this property or this development line along hardwood is to continue to not lose sight of what this space and how special it actually is, similar to the passion that we heard earlier around the Dunes property. You know, we do have some more control around the architecture and how things are placed and what they look like, the amount of traffic that's on hardwood, all of those things. I ask that we continue to take a measured approach and be smart with how we are, you know, controlling the traffic coming onto hardwood, making it safe for my kids to continue to be able to go down the track, the trail that is part of the land trust that surrounds my property, and frankly, you know, not being worried about them getting run over and not being able to cross the street because we've got too many cars on it and too much traffic that's uncontrolled. So thank you again to those and to the council and Mayor Bailey for giving us time to speak on this, I really do appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. All right, was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this item? I did not see anybody else online. All right, seeing none at this point. Staff, Matt, you'll need to put up the updated resolutions up there for the, for council. All right, so council, there is some recommendations before us, if, there's actually four separate resolutions or adoptions that need to be completed. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I wanted to wait with my comments until everybody else had a chance to speak, and I really appreciate the resident, I believe it's Mr. Buffy, and his comments, some of which, you know, echo where my mind is at. So first of all, I want to thank the other four members of this body for representing me as your constituency, because I live here, too. Even though I'm a member of the city council, I'm also a resident, as we all are, and sometimes it's important to remember that we not only are elected officials, but we're also constituents. So thank you for the representation you provide to me and my family. With regard to this development, I'm in a unique position because I was not a member of the city council in 2017 when some of the historical context that Matt provided earlier came online. But let me comment about the time period that I was on the city council from 2008 through I had the opportunity in that time to work on the 2030 comp plan, as did Mayor Bailey and Councilmember Thede. And this section of property along hardwood avenue was zoned, and I believe is still zoned, for single-family. Is that correct? That's the zoning that's currently in place, staff?
So Councilmember Olson, currently the land is halfway, the left side is urban reserved, you are, and the right side is R2 residential estate.
Okay. So of course, one of the things that's being asked of us this evening is to amend our zoning, and it's interesting because the prior item on our agenda required us to do that, and the next item on our agenda requires us to do that. So before I get into my comments, I want to ask a question. You know, there was a small area study done, which I've looked into, and again, this was after I left the council in 2016, and in that small area study, it was indicated that this land was something that could be used for higher density. Didn't say high density, it said higher density, so I would assume that means higher than what it's currently zoned. So that could be medium, that could be high. And I know that in the 2040 comp plan, there was guidance that this property would be high density. Now, what's going to happen is if and when this high-density development comes online, that will then create a domino effect of additional high-density all the way through that corridor, so it's important that people recognize that. When we did the 2030 comp plan, our vision was that we could potentially have a nice walkable, low-profile, you know, even medium-density town home development or single-family home development that would complement all of the development around that area. Now, in addition, at that time that I was on the council, and again, Councilmember Thede and Mayor Bailey can attest to this, you know, we talked at length for, you know, numerous different comprehensive plan conversations, numerous conversations in strategic planning about we need to diversify our housing stock. We need to have more than what Cottage Grove was at that time, which was your typical second or third-ring suburb with single-family homes that seemed to dominate our landscape. And we heard that loud and clear from the market. So there was a strong desire to find places where we could accomplish that with higher density, medium or high-density housing. Now, this also took place in a time period when the current, I shouldn't say the current, the former City Hall site, which is now currently going to be the Grove Eighty apartment high-density site, was even an idea. We didn't know anything about that. And I believe the council in 2017, when they had the conversation about potentially changing this area to a higher-density use, was not in a position to, you know, have the benefit of hindsight that we do today, which is there's now a high-density development that is going to be Grove Eighty apartments, and there's also several other opportunities for higher-density, whether again it's medium or high-density housing stock throughout the community. The market changes, I get it. Here's the challenge. So we had a comp plan in 2030 that said one thing, we had a comp plan in 2040 that says another thing. Now, the council acts as a body, and I would never in a lifetime imagine a scenario where I could cast a vote that would jeopardize the position of the city in the eyes of the law. That is just not something I can do, it's my responsibility as a council member to be consistent with the law. But again, I'm in a unique position here because when you had the conversation as a council in 2017, I wasn't part of that. And had I been, I certainly would have advocated for a different use than this. That's where I stand. I'm challenged by the guided use. I just don't agree with it. And a comp plan, of course, is a guiding document, which we hope always works. A very smart person told me today, it doesn't always happen that way. Sometimes, things that look good on paper don't always work in application, and we'll talk about that more on the next agenda item. So, you know, the city's trying to be responsive to a market need, and in 2017, the market said, okay, city of Cottage Grove, if you want additional density, if you want medium or higher density, give us some spots where you think that can go. And Matt, you articulated very well earlier that this situation here was considered to be an option because of some key factors. You know, I think you mentioned busing, you know, walkability to some services, et cetera. Again, I'm opposed to that. Medium density, I could support, high density, I can't. Again, the small area study indicated higher density, it didn't indicate high density. And my fear is what's going to happen twenty, thirty years from now, when people look back at the decision that this council made to move forward with this, is they're going to say, what in the heck were you thinking? And I always, I always try to keep that in mind because I'm guilty of that. And, and I always, I always try to keep that in mind because I'm guilty of that. Um, and I think all of the members of the council would agree, we've all had situations where we've said, gosh, why in the heck did they develop that way when Kevin Rawn was on the council, right? Why, why, why did we do that? And sometimes we can get an answer to that and sometimes we can't. But we try to do the best we can with the information we have. So, um, I, I am not going to be able to support this tonight, and I'm not going to be able to support it because I can't support the actual guiding use for this. Again, it is my belief, pardon me while I take a drink. It is my belief that the resident who spoke, Mr. Buffy, um, made a very clear argument that this piece of property is a, is a pretty unique piece of property. Um, and it's, and it's pretty precious. And, uh, the way that this property should develop, in my view, should be consistent with the surrounding area. And when you look at the surrounding area, you've got single family homes with Hidden Valley and, and Timber Ridge, you've got the Villa properties, um, adjacent to Hidden Valley, and then you've got, um, some single family homes with a little bit more acreage on Harkness Avenue. Now, things change, I get it. Uh, and, and you can't always stand in the way of change. Um, but in this particular case, I find it, uh, at least in, in my mind, to be unwise to move forward with a high density development on this piece of property. And, uh, again, you know, had I been on the council in 2017, I certainly would have advocated for that, as did Councilmember Johnson, I believe, at that time. So, um, I just wanted to make it very clear that, uh, you know, the people with Apodin have done a magnificent job. Um, the city council made a decision to guide this property for high density, and the developer has come forward and said, oh, okay, well, if that's what you want, let's see if we can come to some agreement. And they've done a very nice job of that. So, uh, I have no opposition whatsoever to them or the process that they've gone through. But I cannot vote for this.
Okay. Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, so, uh, I was on the council in 2017 and, and, um, you know, and when the concept plan, the Harkness small area study came to us, uh, and, uh, you know, it, uh, it was showing actually, uh, you know, in that area, about four or five lower, you know, maybe two-story buildings, you know, something almost like you'd see at a resort or something like that, which, which I actually thought, yeah, that looks pretty good. So I said, oh, okay, I, cause you know, that area really, you know, in terms of the proximity, it, it does make sense for it to be some higher density, you know, not extremely high density, uh, but higher density. And, uh, so that's why at that time I went ahead with it. Um, and a little history, I mean, we did have somebody come in, a developer come in and just want to plop down a, a non-market rate, uh, apartment building there, which really kind of looked, um, not very good. I won't use the other words I was going to use, but, but not very good. And, and so we rejected that. Then, uh, then this plan came forward and it was, again, significantly different from the Harkness area study and the concept. Um, and so I was really disappointed in, in me being a little bit more technical, I kind of, you know, got my pencil going and I, I kind of did a couple, looked at a couple of different alternatives to say, well, what if something like that was down closer to hardwood? Uh, you know, I even, uh, arranged a meeting between Apodin and, uh, the owners of the property on the, on the hardwood curve there to see if something could be worked out to, to kind of utilize that and, and, and make something, uh, a little bit different. Um, you know, and, and I guess, you know, I was told and, and, uh, yeah, I, first of all, I, I, I appreciate all the work that, that Apodin put into it and, and staff and so forth to kind of, you know, try to satisfy my, my, my requests and so forth, uh, um, and such. But, uh, you know, and I was told, well, obviously the topography is, is very challenging with the hills. The, um, in terms of trying to bring it back, you know, down closer to hardwood, um, you know, there was some drainage things that, uh, that Ryan was, was very good about letting me, me know of and, and, uh, and also some bedrock. Uh, anytime you gotta get out your hammer and chisel and start going into the bedrock, it's costs a little bit more, right? Um, and, uh, so, and then also in terms of, of working with like the corner and putting some mixed use into it, uh, you know, I was told that, well, the mixed use is actually not selling too well when it's with apartments and, and things like that with, uh, and such. So, you know, I, I, I guess I, I really wasn't too satisfied, but, you know, it's, it's kind of like you resign yourself to, to the possibilities, but, um, you know, and I, and I, and I'm, in terms of the building, I mean, I like the looks of the building, but just not in that location, um, you know, cause the way it sticks up, the way it, you know, and I mean, you, you did some good sightlines and things like that, uh, but, you know, it's still going to be sitting right on top of that hill, all of a sudden a four-story, you know, building. And, um, um, you know, my, my, I'm just, I, in, in thinking about, you know, the folks up there and things like that, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing the higher density, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm right on, I'm right on the fence. So, um, I still don't know which way I'm gonna, gonna vote, but, uh, I'd like to hear if anybody else has comments, but.
Either you, I, I can add unless you have something. Okay. So, um, on the, the small area study, um, on rezoning, uh, which obviously we're going to have that, another discussion about that shortly here. You know, a lot of times, just for the general public, when the comp plans are being developed, the comp plans are being developed over years. And in the, in the process of comp plans, things change within the comp plan even during that period. And this actually, last one actually was longer than it was then typical because there was a lot more requirements on the city that I think were undue, but that's something for the attorneys to deal with, but, and it wasn't just us as the city of Cottage Grove saying that. But I also wanted just to, uh, mention a couple of things. One, and, and a lot of the stuff was brought up in the development proposal, there was a desire to get higher density closer to the commercial entities. I would, for somebody who's been around for a long time, and I know Kevin's back there, who's going to speak, I think, a little bit on a different project, but knows that that entire area there was nothing many years ago. Clear aside what we're proposing to do today. And if it wasn't for previous councils making a conversation or a decision to move forward with properties, uh, if we would have listened to what we were being told by certain landowners, the entire West Draw would have never been built. The homes that you're living in or in the area where you're living, Justin and Kevin and some of these, only because I happen to know where you live, uh, would have never been built. That road, hardwood road, would have never been built, coals would have never been put in. That was all common open space. And as we're learning, and we'll hear it again tonight, I think, uh, later in our workshop as we talk about the Mississippi Dunes Golf Course too, things are changing rapidly, uh, in, in our community. And the, the, the reality here is we, we did at that particular time during the small area study, and then most recently during the comp plan, made some determinations of where we should put higher density housing, uh, meaning apartments and that, because that is something that we found was very, uh, significantly lacking in our communities, predominantly as Councilmember Olson mentioned, uh, a small or a single family homing process. Matter of fact, one of the initial thought processes, frankly, on the next development proposal, I keep referring to it, that we're going to be talking about, was going to be apartment buildings on the corner of 65th and Hinton, which was going to increase significantly the, the density of that particular area. And so there's all these different moving parts, um, and the different land uses, the different portions of land within our community are changing. Um, and you're right, Councilmember Olson, you weren't on the, on the council at the time that that decision was made. But that decision was made with a lot of feedback from, um, all the different groups, uh, the concept idea, um, which again, we're going to hear, I keep having to refer to this, we're going to hear in a few minutes, or see a concept of what was on 65th and Hinton that just, it was putting a road through a, a pond, as an example. So there's a lot of, um, changes that happen and concepts look good as a concept, but unfortunately, when it comes to reality, I think you kind of alluded to that, um, that, that changes things. But in, in my personal opinion, in this particular, uh, area, it does make sense. There's other areas that we're looking at, same thing. Uh, and my guess is at some point in time, somebody will not be happy, whether it's here or somewhere else. I think what Apodin has done with us, and I do appreciate that, um, is really up the ante, if you will, the quality of the development, uh, the materials is setting a tone. And I think, uh, Mr. Buffy had alluded to that, that if we're going to do something in this area, let's make sure that we set the standard of what the standard should be in there. And I think this council actually has done that prior, as Councilmember Thede had mentioned, we did, we're not just allowing any type of development to come in here. Uh, we do deem this area special. Um, we're trying to do what we can to save trees, which I know is what you were trying to do too in your conversations with them and moving it around and those kind of things. So I just wanted to, uh, mention that that's just some of the, a little bit of the history piece of it, uh, and to understand kind of the bigger picture of how things change over the years, uh, including with the comp plan. So in my particular case, for me, um, I will support the, the motions or whatever to, to move the project forward, because I think it's right for our city, I think it's right for the, uh, the development. I think this, the one side which will always be the, I guess I'd say the west side of, of hardwood will always be, uh, open space because that's a land conservatory.
West side.
Yeah, west side.
Oh, you mean across.
Yeah. Across the street. Will always be green space and trees. Um, the intent of putting it down the middle, if you will, was to create that buffer. Um, that's why we did it down the middle there, because then you have a buffer on the, the east side, which would be medium density, which eventually goes into single family or frankly, apartments on the other side of Oakwood Park. So, um, that's, uh, my comments. Yes, Councilmember Dennis?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, this, this is interesting to be part of this tonight because I know there are some folks in the community that think the five of us here have one voice. And the fact of the matter is we don't. We're all individuals who take time and put a conscientious effort into, uh, giving an opinion on something like we're doing here tonight. Um, one of the things that we have, um, aspired to do as a city council is have each person own their own vote. And that's something that Councilmember Olson taught me when I came here seven years ago. And one of the other things that we always try to do is make sure that we're being respectful of one another and the community when there are times that we don't all agree on something. So this is one of those moments. And so as, as we look at this, um, I want to refer back to our, uh, our financial report that we had here earlier tonight. And one of the things that has us trending toward a AAA bond rating, um, as stated by our expert, is that we are a growing community. And so I've, I've lived here about 33 years, um, for years and years and years, people said, you know, hey, we don't have things. We're good people. We deserve to have things, nice things. And so I think we've worked very hard, um, both as a council and a staff team to provide opportunity. And when you look at what that opportunity equates to, it's over one and a half billion dollars, one and a half billion dollars in economic development. That's amazing. It is the all-time record for our city from any measured period of time. So here we have a circumstance whereby we've got a person, um, a family wanting to sell a piece of land. We do have some guidance on that land, um, at least for this comp plan. Um, we have an investor who wants to come in and put something together for us. And I can tell you, um, based upon feedback that I hear from people, um, young people in, in our community that don't have a place to live, someplace they can afford, they leave. And when that, I think one of your sons did, right? Okay, so when that happens, we, we lose our future. We have folks that are a little bit, um, older in age that, you know, maybe don't want to have to shovel a foot of snow anymore, have a, don't have to cut a yard. They want to live in a place where these things can be taken care of. And I've had people come in, uh, to me and, and tell me, hey, this is the last time I'm going to see you because I'm moving out of our community, because there's no place for me to stay. So we, we hear from all kinds of people across the entire spectrum. And this is the thing which is difficult because really what we want to do, I think, is the same thing that everybody in the audience would want to do, and that's sell happiness. But unfortunately, as we all know, you can't make all the people happy all the time. So we try to do things that play to the greater good, and we also try to do things that'll stand the test of time. So in this circumstance here, we have a development, um, that'll provide 171 multifamily apartment. This will be filled, and it'll be filled so quick, we won't even believe it. Um, the development that's on 80th right now, uh, we've, we've talked to the developer of that, and by the time that thing opens here later this year, they plan to have the thing be filled completely. So that demonstrates that there is a need and a desire, not only from the people of our community to have some place to live, but also, I mean, think of how many of us came here that weren't born here. And we came here and it's been a wonderful community. And we all try to be very proud of the community that we have. So, um, unless there's anything else, Mayor, I would, I would stand to make a motion for us on this.
Did you want to raise? I'll actually have Councilmember Mills, she can want to make her comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just thinking back and reflecting even prior to being on the council and hearing some of the conversation about the variety of homes, styles, different things that were needed, um, that was one of the things when I came on the council that I wanted to work towards, is working towards providing a variety of different, um, homes. And then, um, part of, the first part of my term of, uh, that first term that I was on, was working with, um, the, the Red Rock, um, corridor.
Yep.
And, uh, talking about the, uh, bus rapid transit and what the needs are, that people are needing that, but there's other pieces that have to come into play. And, um, I know that that was a big part of that conversation for the comp plan when we talked about this. And I still stand behind my reason for deciding that, that that would be high density, that particular corridor. It's beautiful and, um, but we have other pieces there, and there is other high density over there by the park. Um, there's other pieces there, and if we can bring more high density, we can help provide some of that transportation, hopefully in the future, here for some of our folks in Cottage Grove. Um, so, and the developer has been incredible in, uh, working with some of the, our requests that we've had, um, in talking about this. It's not just a, you know, here you go, and we stamp it and approve it and off it goes. That's kind of how it works. We have a lot of different meetings that happen, things that are discussed. Um, and so I stand behind, um, supporting this development.
Okay. All right. Did you want to?
I, I will do it, Mayor.
Okay.
I motion to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 073, approving the preliminary plat and final plat named hardwood and site plan review of a market rate multifamily apartment building generally located on 8.5 acres of land between hardwood avenue and Harkness Avenue.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Any further discussions? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. As I said earlier, um, I will be voting in opposition, and I appreciate the comments from all of my colleagues with respect to, um, you know, the positions that you all have taken with regard to this, uh, entire development. And, and I certainly respect that. Um, it is absolutely true that, um, you know, where I live today used to be a gravel pit.
That is right.
And, and when I was a kid, living on, uh, Ideal Avenue and, um, my very first house in the city of Cottage Grove and, uh, going to school in Woodbury, because when you were north of 70th, you went to Woodbury Schools, uh, Woodbury was the Valley Creek Mall and a bunch of farmland. So yes, things change. There's no doubt about it. Um, and, and in my time on the council, I voted affirmatively for plenty of development. Um, and we've also had several instances, especially when it comes to commercial development, where, uh, somebody wanted to come into the business park and it didn't kind of meet with the things that we had in mind from an expectation perspective, and, uh, we chose to, um, vote no and wait for something better. Uh, if I had a magic wand, and I don't, um, again, um, I, I would go back to the conversation that occurred in 2017, um, and, and, uh, you know, try to advocate for the idea that, um, higher density doesn't always mean high density. And it certainly, um, makes sense to have, you know, lower profile, less obtrusive buildings, uh, than a high density apartment complex that would, uh, you know, kind of fill that space along hardwood avenue because it just makes sense. Kind of like when you go to the store. When I walk into Dennis Brothers Liquor Store and I go to the beer cooler, um, there's beer all over the place. Everywhere I look, it's beer. there's beer all over the place. Everywhere I look, it's beer. It's not wine, it's not liquor, it's beer, because it makes sense. And when I go over to the wine wall to pick out a nice Chardonnay for my lovely wife, there's a bunch of other Chardonnays that are there that I really like. And then there's other wines that I might want to try. And of course, the business owner is constantly trying to get me to try something new, so I'll spend a little more, but that's a whole nother conversation. So in my view, the guidance on this piece of property is such that it just doesn't tie into the surrounding community. That's not to say that it won't in the future, because if this high-density, you know, development gets approved, I have very little doubt that before the year is done, there'll be another high-density developer who wants to develop right next door. And that will create that domino effect that I mentioned earlier. So I would just ask that you consider that before you vote. I don't know that it's going to get me anywhere, but I'm going to ask respectfully that you do that. And that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I do like the development. I actually like the building, the way they, you know, they've done it. Unfortunately, I just don't like it in that location. It just, to me, it doesn't fit, so.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. No other discussions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two. So motion does carry. Thank you. All right, are you good for a quick break? Oh.
You have three other.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, look at me. I'm just, I'm skipping by. I apologize. I was, I know that she made a comment to me that she needed a bathroom break. Do you want to do number two, somebody?
Sir Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 1042, amending city code title 11-1-6 zoning map to rezoning certain property in Section 8 from UR Urban Reserve and R2 Residential Estate to R6 High Density Residential District with a PUD Planned Unit Development.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two. Number three?
A motion to approve the Hardwood subdivision development agreement between Apodan Investment Company and the city of Cottage Grove, subject to minor modifications by our city attorney.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. Again, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two. And then the final?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the deferred assessment agreement, storm water management facilities agreement, and encroachment agreement related to the development of a 171-unit multifamily apartment building generally located on 8.45 acres of land between Hardwood Avenue and Harkness Avenue.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Mills.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Again, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two. All right. All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to take a quick five-minute break so we can go on to the final item here, and then obviously we have a workshop afterwards. So council, let's take a five-minute break. The next item on our agenda this evening is Hinton Woods. And Mike Marosla, did I get your name right?
Yeah.
There we go. Our senior planner, one of our newer senior planners, is going to walk us through this one, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. Like the mayor just said, this project is Hinton Woods. It's by D.R. Horton. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, preliminary plat. The subject parcel is located at the intersection of 65th Street South and Hinton Avenue. The subject parcel is 39.95 acres. The applicant's requesting a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the land in the northeast corner of the site from mixed use to medium density, and then a corresponding rezoning from R2.5 residential, single-family, to R5 medium density with a planned unit development and a preliminary plat for residential subdivision consisting of 104 townhomes and 61 single-family units. It is worth noting that 65th Street South and Hinton Avenue, both are county roads. So a little background there, we just talked about the Hall of 65th and Hinton are county roads. The parcel is a tilled field with a existing stormwater pond and easement around it, located on the northern part of the site. Make sure I got this turned on, right in this general area. And then there is an existing storm sewer pipe and sanitary sewer line that run through the site. There is an existing delineated wetland in the northwest section of the site. And then there's a non-significant wetland that can be filled in the lower section of the site. To the south of the subject property is the Pine Arbor Development, and to the west is Cottage Grove Elementary. As previously mentioned, the applicant's requesting to do a comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide the existing mixed use to medium density. The mixed-use area is located on the northeastern section of the property. It's approximately 9.3 acres. The intent of the mixed-use district is to have a similar commercial node, like at, similar to the intersection of 70th and Hinton. And however, this one here a little differently, it is zoned mixed use, which allows for the opportunity to have both commercial and residential on the site. You kind of like the previous projects, you would have an apartment with maybe some shops at the base or some standalone commercial or all residential, at least kind of a wide variety of uses potentially on that site. It's worth noting, though, that within a mixed-use district, you are permitted to have up to 20 to 40 units per acre. In a medium density, like the applicant's request in the zone, is 5 to 13 units per acre. And on the chart on the right-hand side of the screen here, it just does a little analysis here, kind of taking a look at the total permitted densities. As is today, it would be permitted to have upwards of 685 units on the site. Obviously, it's not going to be all townhomes, that's going to be some kind of apartments, some kind of mixed-use product in that corner. And then if the property is misguided as medium density as proposed, it could have upwards of 519 units at max. That's at 13 units per acre. The proposal in front of us tonight is at 165 units, and it's a combination of townhomes and single-family development. For comparison purposes, medium, low-density ranges from 3 to 5 units per acre. The subject site could have 160 units on there, so it's very compatible to low-density use. The, we'll get into that here as we get into the preliminary plat. When you do a comprehensive plan amendment, you have to do a rezoning. The two have to be in unison. So the applicant's requesting to re-zone the property from R2.5 to R5 medium density with a PUD. And the PUD will fit in the surrounding neighborhoods and surrounding zoning as well. As we just spoke about a little bit, the preliminary plat, the key components of the preliminary plat, there is a proposed, the proposed townhomes are in this section here and will be HOA maintained, and have HOA maintain private streets and sidewalks. There'll be guest parking, 29 stalls. There's 104 units in this area. And this has acted like a, it's been, the site's been specifically designed with these units in this sector of the site to increase the possibility of traffic going out to Hinton Avenue. Then interior of the site is 61 single-family owner-occupied, owner-maintained units. These here is, be a newer product, we'll go through here, it's a newer product to the East Metro. There's one other development in the metropolitan area in Dayton that has this product, this is the Express product. But however, it is different than the current product that we currently see in the community. We'll get to that in a little bit. As part of this development, the applicant is requesting flexibility in regards to median, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, they're requesting 55 feet lot width, and then minimum front yard setback at 25 feet. And in addition, minimum lot coverage, impervious surface of 45. However, this is not precedent setting, as other developments in the community have had such flexibility previously. The proposed site plan does have internal sidewalks and trail connections. The proposed streets internal to the site will have sidewalks on one side of the street, that which connect to the Pine Arbor Development to the south, and then out to Hinton Avenue where the existing trail corridor is provided or connected to. It's also worth noting that as part of the HOA, there will be internal private sidewalks that are maintained. The applicant has discussed the potential of doing another potential access or connection to the trail in this general area, and there's further investigating that opportunity. It's also worth noting that the proposed development will have connection to Cottage Grove Elementary School, which is an eight-foot-wide patunus trail, which would be maintained by the city. And the patrol, surrounding trails and corridors do provide access to surrounding parks and other commercial, not commercials, excuse me, residential areas, neighborhoods. The applicant did provide a detailed landscaping plan. There is an existing buffer on the south side of the property that will be maintained as part of this development application. And the applicant will be adding additional screening in that area as well. There is a significant amount of plantings along Hinton Avenue and 65th to meet the intent of the code. And in addition to it, there is some tree removal on site as part of this project, so tree mitigation is required, and the applicant is meeting that with this proposed plan in front of us tonight. Back to architecture a little bit. The architecture here is, there's two products on site. There is the townhome units, which has a varying facade of materials, ranging from stone, hardy board, vinyl, and, excuse me, some shingles on the front elevations here, and with porches to break up the elevations on the front elevations facing the courtyards. It's unique, as this project will have courtyards. The townhomes will face inwards, and there'll be a sidewalk between the units to connect them with the garages will be located, be located behind the product off a private street. The approximate size of the units is 1,687 square feet, and will start in the low 300s. As previously discussed, this is the newer product to the East Metro, currently being built in Dayton. This is part of the Express. Varying facades throughout it, there's opportunity to do varying floor sizes ranging from 1,300 to 2,180 square feet. Multiple floor plans are options available. Some can be slab-on-grade, some can be basements, can have two stories, as you can see in some of the product here, some can be the villa product. In addition, the product can be built with two or three-car garages, and will start around $400,000. This project did have two neighborhood meetings. The first was a virtual neighborhood meeting, which was held on April 15th, 2021, with 18 residents in attendance. Main discussion items at that time were landscaping, construction access and timing, and the concern of a lack of access to 65th Street. As we saw in the preliminary plat, the proposed accesses into this development are off of Hinton Avenue and from the Pine Arbor Development to the south. And we'll get into it a little bit more when I hand it over to the city engineer slash public works director, Ryan Burfin, to talk about the transportation part here a little bit, in a little bit. A second neighborhood meeting was held on site on April 19th, of course, when it was snowing and really nice Minnesota weather. But we had 24 residents in attendance. Mayor Bailey and Councilmember Olson were in attendance, as well as staff, and county engineer Ryan, no, Wayne Sandberg was on site. The primary discussion on site was about the absence of an access on the 65th Street and how that would be, could be incorporated into the projects and the pros and cons of having such an access onto that street. In addition, D.R. Horton's staff did walk the site with the adjacent property owners and discuss landscaping and screening. That brings us to where we are today, getting to where we are today. At the planning commission meeting, the public hearing was held. The meeting was on April 26, 2021. During the public hearing, some concerns were raised that the townhomes don't fit into the existing neighborhood characteristics. However, as previously discussed tonight, there is a desire, be the comprehensive plan, to have a variety of housing styles in the community to serve different lifecycle housing. Increased density, as we talked about, this is on the very low spectrum of density in this guided district. The district allows for 5 to 13 units per acre. The proposed density here is 5.04. The proposed timing amendment as it relates to the 24 comprehensive plan, as we discussed earlier, there's a lot of time and commitment that goes in comprehensive plans. The comprehensive planning cycle started in 2015 and 2016. Metropolitan council required comprehensive plans to be submitted to them by December of 2018. And then they have to be formally adopted after review and approval by the council, by the subject city. And sometimes it takes a little longer, in some cases sometimes it doesn't, depending on the variables in the city. And generally, they were approved around 19, 2019, 2020, depending on the municipality. And there's also discussion how the commercial node shall remain. And it's worth noting that the council did have this discussion at a strategic planning meeting in January this year, where they did discuss this parcel in general and talked about the potential of the commercial, of the commercial ability and developability of this subject site. And at that time, they had a report submitted by Christian Wakefield and talking about how that site lacks a lot of the characteristics when you look for a developable commercial node, such as daytime trips, topography, and just site access was another one that comes into it. But that applies into the site, the topography into the site and everything else that goes with it. And the big factor there is, we're still in a very vehicle-centric society, and a lot of people still want to drive to the destination. Commercial nodes by themselves cannot just be supported by walkability. They need to have that vehicle trip count to drive by there to support that use. And this corner here does not have the trip counts like other commercial opportunities within the community. And we'll talk about that a little bit here as well. Landscaping and screening, we talked about that during the presentation. The applicant is committed to working with the applicant or the adjacent property owners and the Pine Arbor Development. And Ryan will discuss a little bit further detail about the, why there was no access provided on the 65th here in a minute, and talk about traffic volumes. After all that, great discussion by the planning commission and everything. The planning commission recommended approval by a 4-2 vote. With that, I'm going to turn it over to city engineer, public works director, Ryan Burfin. Fine, Burfin. I'm the new guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So continuing on the transportation discussion, as Mike mentioned, we have two access points. We have one off Hinton Avenue, one into the neighborhood. For a 40-acre parcel, that's very typical, we saw that with Settlers Ridge, we had an access to Hadley, and then an access into the neighborhood. Those neighborhood access points are very important when you think about, not necessarily where the neighborhood traffic's going to go, but services. You've got school buses, deliveries, trash recycling, plowing. Want to be able to use those local roads to get around and navigate and not have to go out on the major roads and come back in. So that's why you do see those local access points. On the screen here is the adopted Washington County Access Management Plan. This is consistent with that. That shows Hinton Avenue as the full access to a major road. It does not include an access to 65th Street. And this has been a very large point of discussion, something that we've talked about in neighborhood meetings and at the planning commission. On the next slide, I'll touch on more of the details of that, but this is a little bit more close-up view of those access points. There was other discussion at the planning commission about traffic volumes, and can the roadway handle these traffic volumes? Hinton Avenue has about 6,800 cars a day. There was mention earlier about Hardwood Avenue, where it can handle up to 18,000 cars a day. This is the same situation, that we'll have 18,000 cars a day on Hinton Avenue, but certainly we're well below the design capacity of that roadway. 65th Street, which does not have the access, but certainly cars will go that direction and use that road. That has 2,300 cars a day, which is also well below the design characteristics of that roadway, which it really, between 11,000 and 15,000 cars a day, could handle. So traffic capacity is not a concern. This has been incorporated. This density, this type of development has been incorporated into our plans, both the county and the city, as we look at traffic and ongoing development. Another thing I really want to talk about tonight is that access to 65th Street. It was not proposed with the initial development following the Access Management Plan from the county. So they have general guiding policies that looks for quarter-mile spacing. There is some different options, if it's a collector roadway, where it can go down to eighth-mile spacing. This roadway is unique. The county shows as a collector, the state actually shows it as an arterial, which would follow that quarter-mile spacing. But with that understanding, at the neighborhood meeting, the county said, we can take a look at this, right? We want to make sure that this is not something that's needed, not something that is really feasible. And really, to make that connection, you want to line up with Hedgescroft Avenue that's on the north side of the roadway. On the left is, a lot of discussion's been on a diagram in our comp plan. This is a rendering. It's a two-dimensional rendering, does not look at topography, which is pretty consistent with the comp plan. You can't go to that level of detail in a comp plan document. This area where the pond is, sits 16 feet lower than 65th Street. So the upper right corner, you can see the road that the developers' engineer did sketch in if it were to be built, and then the grading that would occur, the area in red is the area that's filling. area in red is the area that's filling the existing pond and proposed ponding. Uh, if this were to take place, uh, you lose volume, you lose storage volume for large rain events. So it actually impound water on the north side of 65th Street, uh, over two feet on private properties. Uh, that's not something that can be allowed by city watershed state guidelines for stormwater. Uh, we need to be able to maintain that existing ponding and, uh, add to it with the development, which is very standard. Um, so that's really the driving principle behind not being able to have that access to 65th. In addition to it, following the comprehensive, uh, the, the Washington County Access Management Plan, uh, you simply cannot impact that ponding, um, to that degree. Uh, we did look at, what if you moved it further to the east? Is that an option? Um, off the cuff, it's, it's not a desirable solution, but we took a closer look at it. It'd have to be 250 feet away from the Hinton Avenue intersection, so an access from this site would be within the turn lanes on 65th Street, which is a huge safety concern, uh, not something that either the city or county staff would recommend. Uh, and there was more details on that in the county letter that was included in the staff report. Um, so those are all the considerations, I think, that go into this. You know, we can have discussions on the merits, the need of that access, but really with the so, the stormwater ponding as it is, um, it really simply cannot take place. Also mentioned that the Pine Cliff and Silverwood Developments also drain to this pond and then to the south. So it's just not something that we can move. It's at the natural low point of the property, and that's where ponding should and does occur. Uh, with that, the recommendations are on the screen before you tonight, and staff will stand for questions.
All right. Uh, thank you both, the council. Any questions? Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have to admit, when I read through the packet, I chuckled. This is a little bit funny because this, what you're presenting now and what you just presented on the last agenda item are in direct opposition to each other. So, um, on one, we, we're saying, "Well, we got it it this way, this is the way it has to be." And on this one, we're saying, "Well, we got it it this way, but yeah, it's not going to work." So, um, we have to make a change. I want to touch on what Ryan discussed relative to the access to 65th Street because I believe that, uh, a number of the residents in Pine Arbor that the mayor and I met with found that to be sort of their primary, um, issue with, with this. Now, Ryan, you were kind enough to provide me with some information that I want to share with the group, so please correct me if I'm wrong, um, because I'm going a little bit by memory here, but I asked you, what is the distance between four different intersections, uh, and a roundabout? So, um, one of the intersections I asked you about was Jorgensen Lane, which is, uh, up by the, um, County Road 19 area, and the roundabout at County Road 19 and 70th, and, um, that is in the neighborhood of 500 feet. I asked you about Ideal Avenue and 70th Street, uh, and, and then, um, the roundabout at 70th and Hinton, and that was in the neighborhood of 580 feet. Um, I also asked you about the Hedgescroft intersection that you just referenced, and the, uh, potential roundabout intersection at Hinton and 65th, currently just a, a, you know, standard intersection, and, uh, that was in the neighborhood of, you know, 400 and some feet. And so, um, what our friends in Pine Arbor asked us to do was look at if we were to create a even right-in, right-out on 65th Street from this proposed development, um, where would it land? And of course, the natural proclivity is, well, directly across the street from Hedgescroft. Um, but that's just not possible because of the stormwater ponding. So it's not anything to do with distance between here, there, everywhere, um, other than we can't move it to the east because it's only 250 feet and that's just not safe, but it really has to do with the stormwater ponding. And as you mentioned, the stormwater ponding, um, that is currently on the site, uh, also serves other development. Now, one of the other questions I asked you was, um, this is guided mixed-use, so, uh, if we were to say, "Doggone it, that's the way we got it it, and that's the way it has to be," um, what impact, if any, would that have on stormwater ponding? And I believe your response was it would actually make it worse. Is that right?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wilson.
Okay. So, so then you'd even have to have a bigger stormwater pond, which, uh, it doesn't sound like is a very logical solution. So, um, based on all of what I just said, uh, it is your professional opinion and the opinion of, of the rest of the staff, as well as the opinion of the county engineer, Wayne Sandberg, that there really is no option for access onto 65th. Is that correct? I mean, there just isn't. It just, it's just not a possibility.
That'd be correct, uh, Councilmember Wilson.
And you're confident that Hinton Avenue will be able to accommodate the traffic flow, but we also have to recognize that the folks who live a little further down, closer to Pine Arbor, doggone it, they're going to use that road. They just are. Um, because it's closer and it's more convenient. Again, accurate?
Uh, that would be, uh, correct, uh, especially with the Hinton Avenue, uh, intersection. That's something the county will watch, and, you know, as it grows, and we talk about access management, someday that will have, uh, access control as well. It may be a signal, uh, whatever it may be, but that's something that would happen in the future.
Okay. So as you're looking out four or five years as this development comes online, um, I think, um, Mike, you mentioned 165 units of different sorts, which is actually less than the opedan development. It's interesting. Um, but, uh, you know, this whole property is going to be utilized for this purpose, 165 units. Um, looking out five years down the line, do you see, uh, any sort of necessary change to the access point on Hinton Avenue that, um, we'll need to implement in order to prevent, uh, that additional traffic just traveling through on Pine Arbor Boulevard because people will find the shortest point from A to B?
Uh, Councilmember Wilson, that's something, uh, that I did speak with the county engineer about. They have a intersection control ranking system. Uh, both this and the Pine Arbor access to the south on Hinton, uh, they'll be looking at, uh, including with that going forward. Um, and that looks at, uh, what are cars doing? How long are they waiting? Uh, are there accidents? Um, in the five-year timeframe, you know, this area is being pretty well-developed. Um, so I don't know if there's major changes, but the key is actually watching that intersection. Um, it could be more than four to five years, just based on how much lower the traffic counts are now, uh, but it will be watched very closely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions for, for staff at this point? All right, I might come back to a question for the attorney in a little bit. All right, um, is the developer here, would you like to, uh, speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Deborah Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. We're at 20860 Kenbridge Court in Lakeville. Um, Mike Sewell and Fran Hagan are with me. Um, Mike's with D.R. Horton and Fran's with Westwood, who's our engineer. So, we're really here for any questions. Um, we know that a lot of the discussion will focus around 65th access and the, um, the comp plan amendment.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the, uh, the applicant at this point? I think some of the 65th stuff, I think we just got answered to a certain extent by our staff, so thank you for that.
And, uh, just to add, we do continue to work, we are committed, like Mike, uh, indicated, to work with the Pine Arbor residents about the buffer and what that will look like, um, as we move forward with the project.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, so at this point, I'll, I will open it up. Uh, again, I would just ask that anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this item, please limit your comments to two minutes so that we can, uh, make sure we get to everybody, and then, um, I'll ask, uh, staff to take some notes, should there be specific questions that need to be answered, and then we will answer those. So, um, whether it's in the audience or online, if you wanted to, if you're in the audience, if you want to go up and, and state your name and address for the record, that would be a good start. And then we'll go to online if there's anybody.
Good evening. Kevin Rond, 6791 Pine Arbor Boulevard. I'm also the vice president for the HOA of Pine Arbor Ramblers, so, uh, you know, we had good turnouts, and, and thank you, Mayor and Council, by the way, for this. Uh, I know this is unprecedented. It's a privilege to be able to address you where this doesn't normally have to be done, but I can tell you it's been done over the years with great success. So thank you for that. Um, our neighbors are, we're not, we're not here to express NIMBY tonight. We think the proposal that Horton has looks good. Uh, the density is a little bit higher than what we would have hoped for. We kind of thought the business, mixed-use business would have been a good, uh, good fit, but I guess it wasn't to be. Our main contention, obviously, is access to 65th. And I might add that while we think that there is, uh, a real viability for still going by the stormwater pond, we also offered to go further east and link up with the school driveway and form a street there where there's already an intersection. But I think we were told the school wanted no part of that, uh, is what I got back. And, and actually, the county, by their transportation ordinances, could actually ordain that if they wanted to. Um, it is in their, uh, transportation plan. Earlier this evening, your financial consultant from Aylers told you, quote, "Keep doing what you're doing," unquote. Obviously, that means grow the tax base, and the last three, and the last two items in this one is doing exactly that. The community is looking good. I really appreciate, Councilmember Dennis, what you said about the growth and what people feel. I have felt that for 40-plus years too. This is a fantastic community. Horton has been just super, uh, talk, talking with us, offering, going to work with us on the property buffer that, uh, separates the two properties. We couldn't be happier. We know they build a good product. We know it has a good value. And again, the transportation becomes the issue. Um, one other roadway, 65th is AKA your future Ravine Parkway, as I think most of you are aware. And that means it could change. Uh, at any rate, the Ravine Parkway, as it joins up to Jamaica, currently has two full-turn access points coming out. In other words, it's probably you, not the county, that's going to design this street for the future. And I, if my time's up, I apologize. So I'll, I'll stop there. But we really want to work with the city and make sure that happens because we all know, once it's built out, we don't get a chance to, to go back and, and, you know, tear houses down and go out onto the street. Quickly, Your Honor, to your statement that, uh, the road would be built over water or whatever, the storm sewer and sanitary sewer currently run in the easement of that pond, and it was a leapfrog type of thing. You know, the Met Council does not like doing that with musa, but the farmer wasn't ready to sell for many years. And so the, the whole infrastructure was put in. It's never been wet. It's never had a problem. It's been there, I think, two decades. Um, and so it's worked well. And as you know, streets typically go over sewer, and that's why it was guided to go out that way. I'll end there, but thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Was there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak? Yes.
I'll make my two minutes short. Steve Cavalluzzi, 6840 Pine Arbor Lane. My concern is the traffic, uh, not the housing. Uh, coming up the Boulevard is fine, but you're going to have people going up to Holiday to get gas, get their car washed. They're going to come out of Holiday, and they're going to come back down the Boulevard and take the lane, 78th Street, to head down to 61. The other concern is, when you're leaving Holiday and you want to go out to Hinton, sometimes when there's a lot of traffic, it's, you wait quite a while to make a left or right turn. Now you have an entrance on Hinton that's not too far up the road, so rush hour at night or whenever, you're going to have cars backing up to make that left turn on Hinton to go into this development. And then you have people coming out of Holiday that want to also make a left turn heading north. I think you're going to have a traffic jam. But again, my concern is, they come out of Holiday, they come, everything's going to come up through the Boulevard, and they're going to make a right turn on the lane to get 70th to go to 61. Without a roundabout on 65th Street, you can't, you know, turn around, head down 65th to 61 in the other direction. So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this topic, or anybody online? And if you are online, if you wanted to raise your hand. I am not seeing anybody raising their hand online. Um, and so what I thought it would do, I thought it was, um, a, a good segue, I think, because there was a conversation about the previous development from a zoning, uh, standpoint, and then what's, uh, different between that one and this one, um, and how the vote, so to speak, has to be different, I guess, if you wanted to, uh, talk about that, Corey.
Certainly, Your Honor, members of the council. As, as you know, the last application was, um, a rezoning in order to be consistent with your comp plan. Your comp plan is your guiding document. It's how you have intended the future of your, um, city to develop. Uh, you've thought about it, you've sought public input, you've had studies. All of that goes in every 10 years. You reevaluate and determine whether it needs to be changed or it needs to be consistent with, with the previous plan. Sometimes things just take a while to ripen. Um, but you do have the opportunity to, to dust it off every 10 years and look at it and see if you need to make changes, which is what happened between, obviously, the 2030 and 2040 comp plan. But then your zoning ordinance needs to follow that. So if you have inconsistencies or in conflict with the comp plan, land use map, and your zoning map, you have to make the amendments to your zoning map. That's what you did with the last application. The one that's before you now is you have a property that is guided a particular way, uh, mixed-use and, uh, the R2.5 residential, uh, which is how you thought that it should develop when you adopted the comp plan. But a developer has come forward and said, "That's not going to work," and this is why. And they've provided the information to you to support the why. That is something you need to take into account, which is why the application is before you tonight, to reconsider what was a thought of how you wanted the, this particular area to develop, that maybe it won't work that way. You know, you, you look at things on paper, but a developer looks at the things in the dirt, and they say, "This is why this can or cannot work." And so they've presented you with an application that can work, but it isn't what the comp plan originally intended. So that's why you're taking a different look at it, and a new swing at this part of the city, if you will. Um, and so the vote is a supermajority vote. It does require, uh, four of you to agree to amend the comp plan because, once you put that guiding document in place, that's supposed to be pretty rock-solid, so in order to change it, you need to be pretty confident that it needs to be changed. So that's what's being requested of you tonight, to reconsider that maybe the comp plan isn't guided exactly right, and then to zone that appropriately so that they're not in conflict.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Thede, you have some question?
Yeah, I just, it, it, you know, as I look at this, and we see that the mixed-use could handle actually a higher density of homes and everything, uh, what is it about this planned, uh, development that wouldn't work in a mixed-use designation?
I guess I'd leave that to the, to the planner to explain, um, the evidence that they presented as to why the mixed-use just isn't exactly right for this spot. Because I think there's some, some geographical top, topography issues that make it a little more challenging.
But even, even if we still use the same tired, medium density, you know, can we still rezone it from the 2.5 to the, to the, uh, was it five? But we still leave it as mixed density. Could it, could it not work in that designation from the comp plan?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Uh, that's a great question. Um, the reason why it needs to be re-guided to medium density is because it, the numbers. Um, the Met, um, mixed-use district has a density of 20 to 40 units, and it has to be, it has to be in that range. And so the proposed product there does not meet that requirement, so we need to make it, re-guide it so it meets that requirement. Um, does that answer your question? I can...
Yeah, yeah. I, I knew it had to be re-zoned, but, um, okay, so that, that's an absolute minimum, would have to be 20 for it to stay mixed-use?
Correct. Maximum units of 20 units per acre to stay that, in that guided district.
All right.
Well, I do think, uh, Councilmember Thede, part of the purpose, um, for the mixed-use there was, there was a desire, obviously, to have some commercial...
I know, I know what the purpose was, yeah.
Yeah. So, and that's why I thought was interesting when he did bring that up, that we would be actually increasing the, the number of density on this property.
Yeah, in this case, we're reducing the, the density relative to what we had had it in the comp plan for.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was wondering why we actually had to even mess around with the comp plan, but I guess if that 20, if that 20 is at an absolute minimum, and, and it would have to be 20 or absolutely 20 to 40, so that 5 to 13 isn't going to cut it, then...
Right. Uh, Counsel, any other questions on this topic? Right. Counsel, any other questions on this topic? All right. The only other comment I'll mention, then, I guess we can look for counsel some direction, or which, how you want to vote, is, you know, it's interesting, kind of like, this property has so many quote-unquote similarities to the one that was before us just recently. And I can't remember, and I apologize, Kevin, I'm kind of putting you on the spot a second, but I don't know if it was when you were on the council, but if you recall, many, many, many years ago, this lot, this corner, was actually the proposal of where you're at now, which was supposed to be commercial with the residential. And way back then, the reason it was switched, because a developer came forward and said, it doesn't make sense down here because of the topography and such. The landowner was not willing to sell at the time.
That was the big issue, Your Honor. He was reluctant.
Yeah, he was reluctant to sell. And I believe it was Mike Riggs came before the council at that time in the planning commission, said, hey, it would be better off in this corner. And so the decision back then was made to shift everything the other direction, down to 70th and Hinton. So it's kind of interesting, and I bring that only up again, because this is another one of those situations that decisions were made over the years, that things have changed, that caused the city to maybe go a different direction than what they initially planned to do. You are correct, by the way, that at some point in time, the 65th will eventually be, you know, a ravine parkway of some type, though I don't know if you heard or not. But it's literally, at this point, not on any of our radar screens. I think I'd like it to be, you know, because obviously, as development continues up in that area, it's going to be, you know, I think the topography, the way the road moves up there is going to be more of a challenge. So we're going to have to deal with it. But I know on our standpoint, it's not even in our next five-year plan. I don't believe it's even in the next 10 years of the county, which would be the partner. It's at least not in the five, I know. So we have to kind of look at it from what makes sense for today, and also for the future, I guess, is what I would mention. So I just wanted to point those couple things out, just in a general sense. So, Counsel, do you have any other comments, or want to do something with the, there's, I guess, there's three proposals or recommendations before us?
I would move that we approve the proposed 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment to re-guide the northeast section of the subject property from mixed use to medium-density residential.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve of the proposed zoning amendment to change the zoning of the subject property from R 2.5 residential, single-family, to R 5, medium-density residential with a PUD planned unit development.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Mills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dennis. Again, on this one, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the final one?
I guess I'll move that we approve the proposed preliminary plat for a residential subdivision to be called Hinton Woods, which will consist of 104 attached units for multifamily townhomes and 61 lots for single-family homes.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Again, any further discussion? Councilmember Olson.
Mayor, I just want to ask staff, particularly our city engineer, Ryan Burfind, to stay very, very close to this with regard to traffic counts and the flow of traffic. In other words, where does the traffic go? You know, we can model it all we want, but let's stay close to what actually happens. And if it creates a hardship for our friends in Pine Arbor, let's work collaboratively with them to find a reasonable solution as quickly as possible. I don't think we want to put anybody out with, you know, the traffic that this subdivision is going to generate. And we've tried to find some solutions that unfortunately we haven't been able to bring online at this point. But, you know, you have my commitment that I'll stay close to it, and I'm asking staff to do the same.
Yeah, it's actually a great comment, Councilmember Olson. One of the things I was thinking, and I've had these conversations with Ryan and other developments, too, and I know we have a process, but like you said, as we've watched this, you know, if it becomes an issue with cut-throughs, if you will, going up into that area, stop signs will tend to stop that from happening, no pun intended.
Correct. Yep.
So there is some ways that I think we can control the traffic.
There are some tools at our disposal, but I just want to make sure we stay very close. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'm assuming we would hear, you guys would tell us, too. All right. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next on our agenda is council comments request. I get to actually look this way and point. So Councilmember Mills, you want to start us off?
I'll pass tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got one thing that I would like to bring up and share, and that is that we are going to have the Memorial Day Ceremony right here at City Hall, right outside this window. We've got a wonderful veterans memorial that's out there. We're going to do that on the 31st of May at 1:00. And it's going to be a great event. And one of the things that I'm very grateful for this year is that we can actually do this in person and get the community together. So it'll be a nice one. We've got a fantastic keynote speaker and some other folks that are going to make some great contributions to this. So looking forward to that day.
And you said 1:00, right?
1:00.
1:00.
1:00 it is.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Councilmember Olson?
Just one thing I'd like my council colleagues to consider, and I'm going to ask for the city attorney's opinion on this, but it struck me as we prepared for this meeting, and then as we engaged this evening, that we have historically, in the city of Cottage Grove, kind of let zoning changes happen organically as development occurs. And I'm wondering if that might be problematic in some regard with, you know, developers, residential, you know, property owners in the city who, you know, they don't necessarily look at the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan doesn't sync up with our zoning. And so I'm not sure how other communities do it, because I've only been a city council member in the city of Cottage Grove. But would it make sense to take a peek at our 2040 comp plan, identify any areas in that comp plan that are currently not zoned in conjunction or in sync with the way property is currently guided, and then make those zoning changes upfront versus waiting to do it on the back end? Any thoughts on that?
Your Honor, members of the council, it is a difficult thing to reconcile, because you, as your comp plan is guiding where you think development's going to happen, those property owners might not be ready for that. And so to prematurely guide or rezone their property without their consent is a little tricky. But you do have to make sure those two documents are consistent. Case law has held that, and the state law requires that. In fact, there's actually a law that says that within nine months of adopting your new comp plan, you're supposed to be reviewing your zoning ordinances to make sure that it's consistent. So that exercise needs to be done. But how quickly you go through the rezoning, again, is a delicate balance between stepping on a property owner's right to develop their property and making sure you're consistent with your comp plan. So everybody does it a little differently. This community has chosen to wait until things are ripe. Part of the problem with that is what someone thinks is ripe, if it's not consistent with your comp plan, and the council doesn't agree with their proposal, now you have a conflicting situation that will end up in court. And the court will tell you, most of the time your comp plan wins, but sometimes they just remand it and say, you guys figure it out. You need to make sure this is consistent. And so you have to go back and figure it out. So there isn't, I'm sorry, I can't give you a great answer. But it is definitely an exercise that we should go through to identify the areas where they're not consistent with each other, and then determine whether some of them can be amended to make them consistent now, or whether we need to just keep an eye on it for future development later.
Okay. Thank you. So did I hear that maybe that's a conversation we should have at some point? Okay. So that was all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. The only item I have before we move into a workshop session is just a friendly reminder by law, I need to make a comment that we did do a performance review. It's actually more of a touch base, I think, with our city administrator after our last council meeting, which, of course, was closed to the public, because we're reviewing her performance. And I wanted just to mention that the conversations and the performance discussions went extremely well. And so we really appreciate all the work that Jennifer has been, and the team have been putting in within the city. This wasn't like a performance get something for that, but we just wanted, I want to acknowledge, and I'm sure the council would agree with me, that your leading us through the city has been great. And I should just mention with the public, we normally, in the past, have only done, prior to Jennifer being on board with us, one performance review per year, which is kind of the typical. Jennifer had asked, when she became our administrator, to do quarterly touch bases, which is what we just did. But we do have to make sure that we announce that publicly. So thank you for that. All right. Sounds good. Any other comments?